Welcome to the Board of Trustees Meeting for the Village of Romeo, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let us rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we move, sorry guys. Before we move into our roll call, I would like to let everybody know we have Mark Clark, our lawyer here. And this is the phone, this is why it plugged in, so it doesn't die halfway through the meeting. When the board has a question, please address Mark, he'll unmute himself and speak to us. Also, going forward in our meeting, this is a public meeting of this board, of which the public has a right to be here. You will have time to speak at public comment. Each person has three minutes. Trustee Rousseau has offered to keep the three-minute timeline again. Three minutes and three minutes only. Each person has three minutes. If you choose not to use yours, then you choose not to use them. We are not passing them on to other people, nor our board members. This is our one and only warning. We will keep decorum. We will treat our neighbors like we would like to be treated. Because at the end of the day, these are, you're each other's neighbors. And we have to see each other as we go to the coffee shop and we walk around the street. And we are all here because we have something in common, the love of this village and this community. So let's use our, our rights, but also respect those of others. So moving forward, Clerk Trap, please call the roll.
Bartholomew?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Fowler?
Yes.
Care?
Here.
Parker?
Present.
Russell?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
We have seven present.
Okay, we move into our consent agenda. Is there anything we need to pull out?
The minutes from March twentieth. Might be a clerical or type error on three consent agenda. It says, motion by Edwards, second by Parker, approved agenda with addition under new business. It says Jay Park Task Force. Is that, I think it's just.
Joint.
Right.
Oh, okay. No, I can, I'm sorry, you said that was under consent agenda?
Yeah, item three consent agenda, the motion, additional, addition under new business. Yeah, it's supposed to be the, the, it's a new task force.
Romeo Park Citizen Task Force.
Yeah, it just says Jay Park.
Yeah.
Just a typing error.
Gotcha.
Yep. That was it on.
Anybody else for the minutes of March twentieth? Hearing none, let's approve the minutes for March twentieth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for March twentieth.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? None? Was there anything else we needed to pull out, or are we passing the rest?
Tonight's agenda, I would like to move number six public comments to the end of the agenda, please.
Where would you like it put?
At the end, so make it twelve and move twelve down to thirteen.
You want it after closed session?
Or it can be before, either way.
I, I think before would probably be better.
That makes sense. So we'll move eleven and twelve down.
Why are we making all the people in room wait that long?
That's what I was wondering. It's a long time.
Nothing like that's ever been done before.
I think our agendas used to be that way.
No, they did not.
I would argue that.
I would argue that, because I've been to all the meetings.
I'm pretty sure Christine had them at the end for a while.
Okay, were there any other adjustments to the agenda? We can vote accordingly to our preferences of supporting that or not. Agenda? Motion to.
Motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
Was that including the?
The edits.
The edit?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
No?
No.
Can I have a show of hands of yays?
Care, Bartholomew, and Edwards, Renee.
Three nays?
Yes.
Four yays, motion carried.
Okay, moving into our bills. Was there anything on our bills or the special meeting minutes? Hearing none, floor is open for a motion. Floor is open for a motion for the special meeting minutes and the bills.
I motion we approve both the bills and the special meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Rousseau, second by Fowler.
For twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents.
And the one sixty-one.
And the one hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none opposed? Moving into our special presentations, we do not have any. And then moving into our correspondence, we did have two correspondents submitted. One did ask to be read, of which Clerk Trap is going to read the correspondence for us.
All right, there actually are two parts to this correspondence. The first one dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Dear Romeo DDA Board Members, Mr. Greg Tar and Mr. Zach Hayes. Greetings from one of the oldest businesses in downtown Romeo. It has come to my attention there has been some unnecessary stress concerning the new board members and the actual workers and volunteers for the DDA. Until Elizabeth Miller came along, our village of Romeo had some mundane activities going on year after year. Never did we want to be a part of it. Another snore fest featuring the same businesses and orchards over and over. We wanted nothing to do with it. Excuse me. When this lady breezes into our office with new ideas and wanting everyone to get involved, she's a keeper. My dad who has, who was very hard to impress couldn't wait for Vintage Fest, Winter Fest, and Trick or Treat in the village. It took new ideas and new activities to get involved. All of it is good. Not one activity or one weekend gathering has failed with Elizabeth seeking the help from our businesses and volunteers. We were told by competitor over forty years ago that our business would not make it here in Romeo. Yes, over forty years. In that time, we sold and built another one. This just proves that not one business nor one person is an island. Monopoly is illegal and needs to be considered before anyone on the board or any person of authority refuses other proprietors into the village. Special events are not. Think the little food trucks are going to make or break you? Maybe you shouldn't be closed during the weekends. Living my life if they thought, I'm sorry, if they thought of competition freaks you out, you shouldn't be in business at all. I am shocked and appalled at the new board and their antics to slander Elizabeth and the wonderful work she has done for the village. Shame on every single one of you. You are not on the board to help and volunteer. You are there to control and manipulate for your own business gain. Every single one of you should be removed and never considered again. Sincerely, Julie A. Day Schmidtler. Sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly. Okay, and this is part two to her submission. Bear with me that this one is six pages. I will do my best. Romeo, this is written to the Romeo DDA Board of Directors, one four one South Main Street, Romeo, Michigan, four eight oh six five. April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Regarding employment of Elizabeth Miller. Dear ladies and gentlemen, what a fantastic gathering you had in support of Elizabeth Miller. Not only was there standing room only, but the MITV also had eight hundred and sixty viewers on Facebook and much more on YouTube. You cannot deny the energy and support Elizabeth had in that room. I have list, I have attached a list of Mrs. Miller's accomplishments in case no one cared to review the numerous things she had done for our village. Hopefully by now, the entire board has reviewed the bylaws that were sent by your predecessors for these exact reasons. The protocol needs to be adhered to by any board and all board members. The secret meetings, backbiting, and certain members assuring someone else that they will get Elizabeth's job is way beyond reason for their removal. Read the, read the bylaws. If you don't understand something respectfully, I am certain there is another board member who does understand and would help explain. I am officially asking Andrea Saint Laurent, Director of the Romeo DDA, and Zach Hayes, Chair, through my rights under the FOIA to submit to me all documents stating so-called complaints about Elizabeth Miller and the documentation regarding the claims Elizabeth took funds from the DDA. Also, under the FOIA request, please include why four persons, not the usual two, were appointed as members of the DDA by whom exactly and why. This information could be sent to me by my main address, street address above. I expect this information no later than five P M. on Wednesday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Most recently, I've reached out to Carol Humphries, a former member of the Village of Romeo DDA. I had an unusual request from Ms. Humphries. I asked Carol if there are any money remaining in the MRP fund. She asked why. I frankly told her that Elizabeth just might need to retain an attorney for this hostile work environment, and Elizabeth's rights as an employee in the state of Michigan has been violated. Apparently, no funds are available. I have also reached out to Dana Walker of the Michigan DDA. Ms. Walker did attend the meeting. She too recommended you all review the bylaws. This isn't just a recommendation. If the people with numerous eye rolls during this lady's talk had listened and regarded your position as a board member, you would not have, you would not be having this conflict. Protocol, I have a copy of Robert's Rules of Order and anyone would like to review it. Mr. Hayes does a great job, but he needs to take more control as chairman over the meetings. Because this issue has not been resolved and no one is truly willing to talk about it, I am requesting the resignation of the following board members. Marty Hutnick, Director, John Rose, Secretary, Daniel Lee, Director, Megan Poznanski, Village President, Deborah McLeod, Director, Andrea Saint Laurent, Director. These people need to publicly defend themselves for their actions or be removed. This is more than just food trucks coming to the village on special occasions. It's a little clique that wants every event to be about them, their business, and their or their husband's interests. We are talking about the interference of one's livelihood, monopoly, and free enterprise, all of which the above six board members are trying to erase for our village. It's illegal and must be stopped. If I chased every person down Main Street drinking a bottle of water that I did not sell them, not only would I be thought of as a fool, but it would also do more harm than good to my business. Having competition is good. Should I be screaming at John? You can't sell bottled water. This is my block to sell water. Close Marty down because she sells coffee too. This now asinine, your antics have become, have become to your business associates in this entire area. Very few residents and businesses support you and your business in your effort to remove Elizabeth Miller and promote yourself. A copy of this follow-up letter is being sent to the Village Board of Trustees, and I am requested to be heard at their meeting on Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to discuss this situation and request that they remove the six persons, excuse me, I have named, if they do not resign themselves and appoint new DDA, new members to the DDA immediately. I welcome all of you to be in attendance. The Village of Romeo DDA is unwilling to figure this out because they might hurt someone's feelings or the situation could be bad for business. Someone's feelings were already hurt, and you cannot push this under the rug. It's your doing and you need to fix it. The Village DDA Board of Directors has no problem slandering Elizabeth Miller. They should have no problem with me calling in the state of Michigan and having them witness the contrived new board and their lack of inclusion for the rest of us. In closing, let me thank you for reading this, and I look forward to reviewing the information requested of Andrea Saint Laurent and Zach Hayes for presentation. The Village Board of Trustees Meeting, respectfully submitted, Julie Day Schmidtler. She did enclose some bullet points. Did you want me to read over all the bullet points too? Okay, so accomplishments, punch list of accomplishments in eighteen months. Hire date, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one to the present. First bullet, discovered and rectified financial and accounting system overhaul. Created checks and balance with bank accounts and accounting services. All financials were done by the same person who was board member, treasurer, and bookkeeper. No workers' compensation insurance on file, no officer and director insurance coverage. Next item, changed from a flip phone to a smartphone. Created a streamlined communication system with DDA board. Improved communication and collaboration with downtown businesses by created a master contact list of all businesses and property owners. Creation of shopping and dining guides. First option inclusion for all downtown events. Mail chimp newsletters, consistent face-to-face communication. Next item, built a new website in first six months that included immense additions at no cost beyond the original scope of work. Created a donation program for DDA sponsorships through monetary in-kind and donated services. Created a volunteer labor force and built relationships with Romeo Community Schools' serve and N H S programs, residents, businesses, Michigan State Police. Created by annual downtown management reports in cooperation with Michigan Downtown Association. Created the first DDA Winter Fest and Snowman Contest in forty-five days with complete volunteer staff. Built brand-new and logo of downtown Romeo's Small Town Big Heart, a marketing program with no impact to the budget. Created relationships within Macomb County to build awareness and resources. Mark Hackel County Executive Appearance at most events and promo videos. Place A I. data to better understand. Communication with Department of Roads for over-street banner permits. Social media, increased Facebook reach from eighty-six thousand to one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Increased Instagram reach from below six hundred to ten thousand. Weekly promotions of downtown businesses through Facebook and Instagram stories and reels. Created a mail chimp newsletter system for increased visibility and communication with Central Business District, nineteen hundred subscribers. Partnership with Romeo District Library to bring R D L. story walks, including Polar Express, Snowballs, Creepy Carrots, The Night Before Christmas, Snowman at Night. Partnerships with Romeo Bruce, Washington Parks and Rec to collaborate on events and resources. Initiated free promo podcasts and videos via MITV, SEMCOG, Michigan Downtown Association, resident Chris Troy, web developer, Think Street Media, Our Detroit Magazine, W B R W. Cost share internship awarded by four county foundation, community foundation, sorry. Hired part-time admin event coordinator. Collaborated with Village of Romeo Crosswalk Project, D T E. pole replacement that was in danger in southeast quadrant. Initiated placement of faded parking one-way and do-not-enter signs. Initiated a temporary alley closure to build a fun placemaking space to draw attention to downtown through donations exceeding ten thousand dollars. Spruce it up Sunday event in June, two thousand and twenty-two to clean up blighted areas in the downtown alleys and park, all donated materials in time. Created solutions for parking, created solutions for traffic during terror on Tilsin. Created a vigil, village-wide mailer promoting downtown Romeo and Screech Fest. Consistent banner installation practices. Working to create a memo of understanding between the DDA and Village of Romeo. Working to build a streamlined system for new businesses and property development within the Central Business District. People Driven Credit Union, January, two thousand and twenty-three. Acquired five-year rent-free lease of twenty-two thousand square feet office space, including all utilities, including heat, air conditioning, cleaning services, Wi-Fi, excuse me, Wi-Fi access dumpster use. Fully furnished offices, conference room, and center for conference lounge reception area through donation required from B P D C U. Renovation of space through monetary and in-kind donations. Sponsorship goods and services at cost from over twenty local companies, individual residents, and downtown businesses exceeding twenty thousand dollars. Created the following events, Winter Fest, two thousand and twenty-two. Story Walk facilitated adoption of seventeen giant snowmen and snowman competition. All prizes donated. Wagon rides, first robotic demonstration, kids activities. Arbor Day, two thousand and twenty-two, in collaboration with the Romeo Tree Board. Concerts, vendors, kids activities. Vintage Fest, two thousand and twenty-two, closed in Main Street for vintage cars, concerts from ten A M. to ten P M., dance lessons and dancing. Vendors in the park, kids activities. Downtown Day, two thousand and twenty-two, first day to have bus crews throughout the town. Screech Fest weekends in Romeo, including, but not limited to, Story Walk, Art and Wine Walk in collaboration with Chamber of Commerce, Witches and Warlock, Free Pumpkin Carving every weekend in Marketplace Alley, wagon rides, bus crews throughout businesses at no cost. History and Haunting Tours in collaboration with Romeo Monday Club. Interactive map for storefront competition in Halloween-themed homes throughout village. Kids activities, Winter Fest, two thousand and twenty-three, Story Walk. First Village Five K, Romeo Winter Fest Five K. Bus crews throughout the businesses at no cost. Expand snowman competition to include twenty-six snowmen. All prizes donated, wagon rides, first robotic demonstration, kids activity. And that was the completion of the item she had submitted. Okay, oh, there's one more. I'm sorry, flipping the pages. And then then we do have another one. Oh, here we go, sorry. There's the beginning of it. President Poznanski and Village Council. Our village and our downtown has been the center of turmoil for the last few weeks. It is certainly heartbreaking for all of us to see and for those of us in the middle of it. I would like to offer the perspective of a board member. I am writing this letter to you as a thirty-five-year Romeo resident and current DDA board member. My experience and roots in Romeo are deep. I graduated from Romeo High School. I owned a business downtown for ten years and served on the DDA board for two terms during that time. I co-chair the Historic Christmas Home Tour and volunteer at Starkweather. I love Romeo. While I no longer work in the village, I look forward to coming home to work, from work to Romeo and spending my evenings and weekends here and with family and friends. This is my hometown. When I saw the opportunity to serve the DDA board again, I was thrilled. The change in board members was clearly hard for some, and the opportunity to welcome us and learn about us and our experiences and vision was unfortunately never taken. While I can only speak for myself, I can assure you that the DDA board as a whole is vested in the success and viability of the district. Stop into one of our pillar committee meetings and you will hear discussions of incubator programs, fresh year-round marketing programs, creative ways to address parking, spotlighting our vibrant artist community, ways to attract businesses to our growing empty storefronts, and beautification of the village. It is so unfortunate that a group of seventy-five or so people out of our almost four thousand residents have treated the DDA board as disrespectfully as we all, as we all saw at the last meeting. The barrage of yelling, name-calling, failure to come to order, talking over the board members, and threats of lawsuits that has not stopped since our meeting has taken away the good, honest work that the board is trying to accomplish and have become the spokesgroup and moral, morale and employment authority only because they have a microphone. Our hour and a half of public comment and the vast majority of it was misinformation as to the actual topic and recommendations that were yet to be made. As a board member, my request for use of a portion of the new two thousand square foot DDA office space for a small meeting was denied as unavailable. And then later that day, the same date and time was offered as an option for another mix of DDA board members to use for a meeting. We are denied communication with the director, and some have been told that all communications need to go through Greg Tar, although Zach Hayes is the board chair. A hostile environment has been created for the board, yet we continue on with our committee budget and board meetings as a volunteer group. I want to point out to the council that the focus of the DDA is, number one, correcting and preventing deterioration in business districts. Number two, encouraging historic preservation. Three, authorizing the creation and implementation of development plans in the districts. Four, promoting the economic growth of the districts. Five, creating a downtown development authority board. Six, the DDA may raise revenue for physical improvements through several methods, including tax increment financing, issuing revenue bonds, tax levy, and grants. The Board of Directors is responsible to and took an oath to serve the village. We are working hard to do that. What we all need to realize the DDA and its purpose is not to serve the pleasure of an employee or a spokesgroup. Per the DDA bylaws, the director shall not be a member of the board. The director shall serve at the pleasure of the board for no definite term of office. The relationship between the DDA board and its employees should be handled as an employee matter. Turning it into a circus for personal gain to circumvent an honest conversation with your employer is not to the benefit of the taxpayers. The DDA has legal representation to call upon and engage with, to assure proper handling of issues, also as stated in our bylaws. I ask that the Village Council continue to support and trust the DDA board. Yes, this is a difficult time, but it is one that we are committed to weathering, and while we weather it, we are still doing the work you've appointed us to do. I truly thank President Poznanski for taking the time to meet with me and learn about my experience and my desire to be on the DDA board again, and I thank you, the council, for approving me to be on the board. It is an honor to serve one's community. I truly hope that you will continue to support the DDA board in our efforts of economic vitality, historic preservation, development, and beautification of the district. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you to discuss my background and my ideas and vision for the district. I also welcome you to our board meetings, as well as our committee pillar meetings, to see that we are doing what we were doing and the good ideas and work coming out of the board. I also encourage you to share this letter with your constituents, and I look forward to the opportunity to meet with them all. I will be at the April seventeenth council meeting and can be reached at, I'm not sure if you want me to read your phone number. Go ahead. No, okay. An, an email, DDA email, sincerely, Andrea Saint Laurent, DDA board member.
Thank you, Clerk Trap. Moving into our officer reports. Clerk Trap handed hers out to us, as we know it was going to be a long meeting. Did you, is that sufficient or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
We also have a submitted from our treasurer. Did you want to read it all, Caroline? Okay, Caroline's, Caroline's is also submitted. Pardon me?
Can I ask a question regarding Clerk Trap's, um, report here?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm just trying to turn my phone off.
Have you, were you able to meet with your cemetery board?
Yes, we met with them last week.
Okay. Did the top, the topic of expansion come up at all or?
Yes, the topic of expansion did come up, but the board is still standing with their priority being the roads right now, and then they are considering what phase two would be. So they are calling the roads, repair the phase one of the expansion, and then we did discuss.
And then we did discuss what would Phase Two look like and what opportunities we would have for expansion as far as either grave sites or columbariums.
And as far as grave sites, have you done any more research as far as the buybacks of certain burials, or not burials, but crypts as far as people are not using?
There is a process in place, but it's through the state of Michigan, which can take up to two to three years for buybacks of what we have deemed as vacant or, what you call it, can't think of the word right now, where they just ignore them, can't think of that word, spots. But there is a process, but like I said, it could take up to two years.
Have you started that?
We have not started that because we are still identifying all those spots.
Because I know that our past president had mentioned something to you as well.
Right, because we are still in the process of getting all of our paper archives onto a computer system, we are not done yet. And in that transition, we are, that's when we're recognizing all the vacant spots.
So when might that be done?
That is hard to give you a timeline at this time because it's just me, when I have a free time, I can look into that.
Well, yeah, okay, but I know that our past president did ask you.
Right.
Over a year ago.
Yeah, and it's, it's being worked on, but I did have somebody who was assisting me, but that person is no longer assisting. I, they were assisting with cemetery duties, I don't, I no longer have that, so.
So are you handling the stuff on your own then?
Yeah, on top of all the other items, yes.
I'll check in again with you next month.
Okay.
All right.
And Catherine, are you still looking for volunteers placing flies and veterans carries?
I am, that is going to take place the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday prior to Memorial Day weekend.
All right, that was a Clerk treasure report. I have mine, it's very, very short, I will give the extended version to the clerk later. Starting off, Clerk and I attended the SEMCOG General Assembly and represented Romeo on March twenty-third. My training course for the Michigan Infrastructure Council Asset Management is almost done, I have one more class to take. Regarding the road bond, which we will see later, I have met with our engineers and Mr. Metz. The catwalk, that is a good topic that I've been asked on a couple of different occasions. Went and walked it with Mr. Metz. And it's in major need of repairs, essentially completely redone, so we are working on estimates to bring back to the council. So that will not be opening up, I do not want to reopen or have a grand ceremony to then have people trip and fences caving in. So I would like it to be, if, if we're going to continue down this, bring it up to code and have it a nice place for people to walk down. Our trailside park is having Arbor Day at the end of the month, April twenty-eighth, that starts at nine-thirty. Please come join the Village Tree Board. There'll be twenty-nine trees being planted there that day, majority of it all donated. So thank you to Green McComb and Cars for donating that. Regarding our water bills, everybody at this point should have received your note, some information in the mail. We held two seminars last week, ran into two main questions. One is what is my meter size, because a lot of it is determined on your meter size. And the other one is why is there such a price difference between the three-quarter and the one-inch? We've addressed the meter size, we've gotten that put on their water bill, so when you get your water bill, you will see your meter size, so you know which table to, that goes along with. And regarding the price of the three-quarter versus the one-inch, we do have a few answers for that. I've reached out to John Kesar and we can address that when we get to that point of the meeting. We have Shred Day coming up on May twentieth, nine to twelve. Are we right here in the parking lot? This is a joint between Bruce and Village of Romeo. We are also inviting all of you, what fabulous council members, to join us and volunteer that day in getting the work done. And then when you're done there, head on over to Mayfest at the Lions Field. Our village striping, we have not done this, used to do it every year, gotten away from it. We're looking into some quotes, the people who have done it in the past are no longer interested. So we're going to get on that and hopefully get that done this summer. That's just shortened version of my report, let's move into trustees. We'll start with a seasoned one, sorry, I was going to go that way, go ahead trustee Parker.
Nothing is trustee, are you planning, we have planning meetings?
Thank you. One twenty-two South Rawls was approved for special land use. There was some question why it got kicked back to planning because it was already kind of non-conforming. I don't know where that came from, because it was already used as a medical building and they were just adding another medical office.
I believe that had to, that was the planner?
Yeah, that came from the planner.
Yep, that came from the planner. She does an initial review before items make it to the agenda.
She had questioned it also saying that there was probably no reason for it to even come for a special land use because it was non-conforming because it was always used as a medical before the new ordinances went into place. So we went through with it anyways, but it was questioned why they had to pay for that, so I don't know, we want to look into that. One-five-three-five-five, thirty-two mile road site plan was approved with contingencies. Looking into some issues with the drainage behind there into the river and a couple of other things that Lisa pointed out. And then we just had further discussion on the office and mixed land use or mixed use district. Nothing was finalized, just conversation had, that's it.
Anything for trustee?
No.
Trustee Russell?
I do not have anything for trustee, but I do have no zoning board of appeal meetings since the last meeting. And we have a Romeo Citizens Park Task Force meeting coming up, end of April. And we are still looking for additional Village of Romeo residents who may want to be on this board. We'd like some representation for the entire village, so particularly north of thirty-two or maybe even east of Maine or Van Dyke, whichever you choose to call it. So if anyone's interested, you can send a letter to the president and thank you.
Trustee Edwards?
No, nothing.
Trustee Bartholomew?
Yes, as most of yous are aware, Good Friday, we had our first annual Walk the Cross at the Romeo United Methodist Church. And it was a success, thank you for everyone that came up. But I'd especially like to thank Chief Dan and his officers who kept everyone safe during that time. They were blocking off the busy roads where we had to cross. We had just under two hundred people and some, a lot of kids and a few people in wheelchairs, so thank you officer, thank you Chief Dan, your officers. That's it.
Trustee Fowler? Trustee Care?
Uh, yeah, I'm excited to be here, I want to thank everyone who helped me get to this point. I'm really eager to serve my community and work with this great board, that's it.
Welcome.
Welcome. Wrong paper. Okay, committee reports, I have nothing to report from Bruce Seward, do any of the other committee members?
No.
No, I do.
Okay. Pardon me?
Never heard anything from.
No. No. Crosswalk Subcommittee? I have not heard back from HRC, handed over all of the paperwork, still waiting on that, so that's where we're at with that.
Well, we're on committees, can we, I mean, if we're not going to make any more movement on the Bruce Committee, should we dissolve that at this time?
The Seward Committee?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
I know, we brought it back. I mean, keep in, we can, I can reach out to Mr. Philbrook and we can make a decision next month.
Sounds good.
Let me make a note of that. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, we start with our rules of procedure. I hope you all enjoyed the organization of your packets this month.
Thank you so much.
Much approval, yes.
Are you, did you prepare these or is the clerk doing this?
No, I prepare your packets. You are, you're my board. Okay, we have our rules of procedure, I made the other edits. The only current edit coming from last month was under that Section D in discussion and voting that in all forms of communication, it's highlighted there. Other than that, if we're done, then I suggest we approve it. If not, I didn't know, trustee Care, you had any, so first time you get to see it and make any recommendations.
No, I'd like to use my first time seeing it to make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
I'll second. Edwards.
Bartholomew.
Oh, it was Bartholomew, all right.
Okay, and did we have any further discussion or edits? Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Moving into our water ordinance update resolution, we do have someone here. Pardon me. Wrong spot, sorry, that's our bond. Okay, our water ordinance, this was prepared by Mr. Clark. At last month, we added and talked about adding in irrigation-only language, so that has been added in here for you. So if this is acceptable, I ask that we, someone make a motion to pass the ordinance with the updates.
I'll make that motion, the updates, support.
I would like to just quickly address though that, the issue of the, when you get your water bill, you're going to have a couple fixed costs, whether you have five-eighths, three-quarters or one-inch. Questions have been raised. The five-eighths and three-quarters is a combined section and their rate is the same, the one-inch is different, it is a higher rate. Under sewer, underwater, there's only a thirty-dollar difference. Under sewer, you go from fifty or fifty-five to a hundred and twenty-five, so there's a larger jump there. So the question has been raised, why this jump? And speaking with Mr. Kesar this afternoon, so where we have it is, the majority of the village is five-eighths and three-quarters, about thirteen hundred and some change. Very small part is the five-eighths. We have just under four hundred that have the one-inch meters. The rate for the five-eighths and the three-quarters is actually, I did not know this till today, rounded down to the five-eighths cost. So they all pay, whether you have five-eighths or three-quarters, you're paying that set rate. And the one-inch is the one, is, oh, what did he say? So essentially, the difference between five-eighths and one-inch, it's two and a half times the volume can be fed through that one-inch meter. So the suggestion was, instead of having the five-eighths, three-quarter price be at the five-eighths price, we essentially, we're going to raise the three-quarters so that the one-inch comes down. That is, which would put us at, the difference between three-quarters and one-inch would instead be one-point-six-seven times the volume. If this is something the board would like to do, we need to do it as soon as possible, like tonight. We do have our special meetings or our budget meetings. So there is a possibility I could get the actual costs, hopefully by next week. Could put a special meeting at the beginning of one of our budget meetings and then make the decision at that time with the actual hard numbers. But this was just information I received today from Mr. Kesar.
So we could table this until?
Well, I wouldn't table the whole updating of the ordinance. But this could be, this one-inch versus that one-meter on the sewer side can be, it all can be updated at any time. But in order to move forward and to get, keep going with the process, I wouldn't table the whole thing for the month to wait.
I have a question. Previously, the use for watering only the water, watering yards and things of that nature was set aside just for condo complexes, apartments and things of that nature. And I've had residents get excited about it, go down to the village and that's what they're told. This, the way it's written though, however, allows it to be open for anyone.
That is correct, that's what the board has decided.
I, I prefer it that way, I just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
Yes, everybody can have an irrigation-only meter, it cannot be any smaller than a one-inch meter. You will only be billed two cycles out of the year, which is, pardon me. At every other time, you will receive two other fixed costs, your ready-to-serve fees. If you have irrigation, you will only receive that ready-to-serve fee twice a year. That equates to six months, because you will not be using, and we recognize, washing your car, filling up your pool or watering your lawn in those cold winter months. So you will not reserve, receive that fee. You will see that definition on your bill and it will have zero.
You said it has to be a minimum of a one-inch meter?
No less than one-inch.
What if you don't have a one-inch coming in?
That is another thing that we've need to address is that there are currently irrigation meters out there that are less. Are we choosing to grandfather them in? Are we choosing to enforce this? And maybe they have three-quarters and we don't make them change it, but then we still have them charged at the same rate, that's a.
I was just talking, the main coming into the, the residence may not be a one-inch.
It's not coming into the residence.
Right. What's that?
It's not coming into the residence.
Yeah, but why are we going to have a one-inch meter on a three-quarter line?
I don't really answer to that.
Yeah.
So this board needs to decide how we would like to take care of, we do have a good dozen or so that already have smaller meters than what is, what we are requiring in the ordinance.
I would say you just grandfather them in, you don't, you don't want people pulling their pipes out and replacing them, but.
No, so then we would need to come up with another cost for three-quarters irrigation.
You just make it a flat fee. You could base it off one-inch, you could base it off whatever you want.
Yeah.
But just make it a flat fee, if you've got a separate irrigation system, this is what the cost is.
Right, okay.
Leave it to three-quarter until it needs to be replaced? I would say let them keep the three-quarter until it needs to be replaced.
And then update as you go?
And then they update as that happens?
Yeah. So, but they will still pay the one, they will still pay the one-inch meter fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I understand, Matt, what you're suggesting is if you have that one, the grandfathered one, you're going to play a flat fee regardless of how much water you use?
The ready-to-serve fee.
So what you have.
Not a flat fee based on how much water you use, that's not true.
The ready-to-serve.
It's still going through a meter.
Okay, all right.
You're going to have a ready-to-serve fee and then you're going to have your usage.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure.
And you're still going to have that, the usage for irrigation is six-eighty per thousand gallons? If I'm recalling that correctly.
You just don't want people that already have a system in, have to dig it up and replace.
Correct, or, or upgrade their meter, there's, there is a small enough portion that, yeah. And we have a meter shortage, so currently, if you have a working meter, there is not an option at the moment to change your meter. So say you have a one-inch and you'd like to go backwards to a three-quarter, that is completely feasible once we have meters for you. At the moment, if your meter is broken, you will be the first one serviced with meters that we have on hand. Is the best we could do, poor planning, that, I mean, to be honest with you.
What happens to the twelve-dollar maintenance fee?
There's no longer that, that, that is all captured in the cost of ready-to-serve and your usage.
Okay, and is this the plan that Mr. Kesar recommends?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think you could call the rule on this one.
Motion by Fowler?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
So just to be clear, did we want to entertain the changing of that rate? Or did you want to just leave it?
After you get the information?
Okay, I will try, yeah, we should be able to get it by next week, I really hope so. And if not, by next meeting and we will have, we have to make a decision. Because these bills need to start coming out and they're trying to make all of the changes and stuff in the office.
If we have it from Monday, right, and then we have another meeting scheduled Tuesday, we can pop it in the beginning of Tuesday?
Correct.
Awesome.
And then we don't have to get paid twice, save some money. Okay, office time study. I did not have anything, nothing was given to me, so, but I know it was requested for the agenda.
So Catherine, are you going to pursue a time study so we can figure out if you, how many more staff or how?
Yeah, but I need some parameters, some guidelines and a not-to-exceed budget. I mean, is this, like, parameters, guidelines, is this going to be outsourced? Is this a outside company or how do you want this to be done internally? I just need a little bit more guidance.
Okay, you could outsource it if you wanted to maybe consult with a couple of companies. But there's lots of different ways you can actually pull information and get time study documents that you can complete and the staff can complete. But if you feel more confident and comfortable maybe getting just a brief outside source to do it, because then we can say, yes, absolutely, you know, they're saying we need one more. because then we can say, yes, absolutely, you know, they're saying we need one more full-time, or a full and a half-time, or... Then it's, it's an objective third party who may decide we need more or less. Does that sound fair?
Yes, I would just need a not-to-exceed budget.
Good question.
We want to get quotes.
Yeah, I think...
So we can determine how much we, I have no idea what something like that would cost.
Yeah, generally, it depends on, like, how long do you want them to, to study it? And, you know, how big the operation is. I mean, it's, it's one office. And I guess I'd look for your suggestion, and you know how the office ebbs and flows, and kind of when the busy times are and aren't. So I'd look for your feedback on when do you think would be optimal times, or for how long the study should occur.
I, I just think this is a cost we just don't need to incur. We have an office of 10 people, tops. And if you're asking them, you know, they, they know how to man the office. I, I just think that this is a waste of time, and a waste of money.
Maybe in the short run, but in the long run, a $20,000 or $30,000 employee, or if we need, like Catherine said, she only wants to hire part-time, but...
Then she knows what she needs. She needs a part-time employee.
What if we could restructure and better benefit? And what if they say a full-time employee might do this better, or a three-quarter, or... It's just about making sure we are...
This is the Village of Romeo, not the city of Royal Oak, Detroit.
I didn't say it was Royal Oak, Detroit.
We have 10 people.
We, she has four.
She has four people.
Including herself.
Outside company come in and do a, a study?
She would like more staff. I'd like to support that.
If she needs more staff, then let her make the proposal.
Ooh, can I ask for more staff, too?
You can, you need it.
She needs it. Okay. I just needed guidelines on how you wanted this done?
I would like to see the study be less than a month. And if, if you could get two or three proposals, then we can decide. And you can choose, you know, what timeframe in that month works, or if it's the whole month, or depending on what the proposal says, you know, two weeks is the same cost as three or four.
Okay.
But then we can really narrow down what you need and get the most for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into our IT RFP. In putting the, the RFP out for bid, Clerk Trap emailed our current IT contractor to let him know in case he wanted to bid on it, and at which time he let us know that there was already an extension on the contract, of which was not noted anywhere, and Clerk Trap was not aware of. So at some point in May of '22, President Melzon renewed this contract. So we said, we went to Mr. Clark, asked how binding this was, given that the council did not approve this. It didn't go back out for RFP per our rules of procedure. And I don't know, let me say, Mark? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Okay, you are there. Could you speak to the IT, IT contract and how binding it is of which was renewed?
Again, the, it appears based on the information provided to me that, as was mentioned, there was an extension that was entered into. It appears, based on what I have reviewed, that Mrs. Melzon signed that extension on May the 31st of 2022 in her capacity, the village president. A Mr. Gotchuk, whose title is vice president, appears to have signed the same item on May the 31st of 2022. And so it appears the question you have before you is, do we put this out for bid as we had intended? Or do we honor this extension? I think if you choose to put it out for bid, that you can go ahead and do that. I believe probably Mr. Gotchuk on behalf of his company is going to say, well, wait a minute, we already have an agreement, there's nothing to put out for bid. Our extension goes through, I believe, 2025, if I'm not mistaken, August 31st. The difficulty presented to the village is this. There are several different kinds of authority. There is what is called actual authority. Does somebody have the actual authority to enter into an agreement like this? Under your rules of procedure, your, those rules that govern your decisions and the expenditure of money, this is something that probably should have come before the board. So the question becomes, at the time in May of 2022, does Melzon have actual authority to enter into the agreement? And the answer to that is probably not. From Mr. Gotchuk's part of it, SYO or his side of it, he's going to say, well, wait a minute. I didn't know that Mrs. Melzon didn't have actual authority. As far as I knew, she was, which in fact, she was the village president at the time. She holds the title of chief executive officer of the village, as provided in the General Law Village Act. And so I relied on her representation that she could bind the village with respect to the extension. That's called apparent authority, where somebody has apparent authority to enter into an agreement, whether or not they have actual authority. So the difficulty from the village's perspective is, if you disavow this extension, you're going, your disagreement, if you will, with SYO is going to be whether the apparent authority is sufficient to bind the village. If it is, then you're going to be bound by this extension. If it's not, then you don't have to honor what is essentially an extension based on authority that the then-village president had. I am concerned on behalf of the village about the apparent authority. I, I don't have any, any information other than what's on the face of the document, but I can anticipate that reasonably so, SYO is going to say, well, we dealt with the village president. We never dealt with anybody else, or whenever we did, the decision-maker was the village president. We had no reason to believe or know that this contract or this extension was not going to be... So you probably, the village is probably going to be on the, the, the shorter end of the stick on this, if you will, using a non-legal term. But on the other hand, if you choose, you can put this out for bid and see. Maybe the bids come in higher than what SYO has proposed. Maybe SYO says, the heck with it, we're pulling the plug, we're not going to do any of this, and we're not going to bid on it. Or, the heck with this, if you try to put something else in place, we'll just simply sue the village to collect the money under the extension. I don't know what the difference in the fee is. The extension provides for $444 a month. I don't know what the fee was prior to May 31st of 2022. In other words, the question I'm asking is, how much money are we talking about? Or more accurately, how much money are you talking about? If you're looking at $20 or $30 a month, and I don't mean to make light of it, because it's other people's money, it's taxpayer money, I'm not trivializing it. I will say, if it's a modest amount of money for the effort and expense to get into a wrestling match over this, you have to, I think, take cognizance of the amount of money involved. Are we talking about a few hundred dollars, or are we talking about a few thousand dollars or more? I think that the financial consideration should be part of your overall consideration. But I am troubled by the, from the village's side of this, that the agreement would appear to have been made based on apparent authority of the then-village president to make the agreement, and that's problematic for the village.
Mark?
Yes?
This is Matt. Doesn't the village president have some leeway given to them by the board to spend X amount? And I don't know what that number is exactly, it's kind of maybe why I'm asking. To be able to get into agreements like this?
Yes, and, and that's something that, that should be examined and is certainly worthy of consideration. I don't know what those, those numbers are, but you do have, I believe, I don't know the, the title of it, if it's called a, an expenditure policy or a financial policy, but you do have policies in place that allow for expenditures of a certain amount of money. I believe you have a cap or caps on those. It may be different depending on the circumstances. And if this fits into that, then it changes my concern from one of apparent authority to actual authority. And if the actual and apparent authority were there, then the village is bound by this agreement.
Of which I did put the excerpt from our purchasing policy on your front page. That's where the number seven purchases greater than 10,000. I conferred with Clerk Trap how we would, because there was, is it five to 10, and then over 10? Which category this fell into? So we took the 444 times 12 times the three-year extension to get to the greater than 10,000. So that's why I put that excerpt, which does give, and I'll just read it for you. Purchases greater than 10,000, purchases of supplies, equipment, and contractual services greater than 10,000 require the development of a request for quotation, request for proposal, or request for bid, except when deemed impractical or inappropriate by a majority vote of the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees, or in the case of an emergency. So that's why that is on there. But the, the major question here is, would you like to continue to go out for RFP in this area? Or are we going to accept this contract renewal and not question it? What, that's what the overarching question is here.
Was SYO the, the previous software person also?
This is an extension.
Yes, that's why it's in, correct.
So I guess I'm kind of more in the mood to just maybe leave it for now, because maybe it shouldn't be done again, because I think it does go to 15,000 for the three years. But I think the money we would spend in potentially legal issues and things of that nature, plus he brings experience to the board. Everything's, including the whole snafu we had at the office with people holding our software for ransom. He's got experience with that. I, I guess at this point in time, I would just assume, honor it and just don't do it again.
Make that motion?
We don't...
I can make that motion if you want.
I, I...
Support?
I'd say let's go out for bid.
Okay, hold on. There's a motion and support. Open the table for discussion.
I, I would recommend going out for bid, follow our policies as in place. I mean, this is well past the time limit. Go out for bid, see where we're at. I think Mark Clark referenced that, and for...
As long as we keep within that, the option to accept or reject all bids, we could reject all the bids and continue along with what you're suggesting, Matt.
I think it would be good to know, because I don't have the previous contract, so I don't know how these numbers have changed.
We got it last month, I believe.
Pardon me?
I think it was in our packet last month.
It was.
Do you know what it was for last month?
It's not, it's, it's, it's like $30 or less is the difference.
It was a $25 increase.
Twenty-five?
Per month.
Per month.
Per month. For our contractual services. Our email hosting and our spyware packages did not change prices.
Right. So it can't hurt to get the proposals, and then we don't have to do anything if we choose not to? But I, I like consistency, and I like following policy. So if we at least make an attempt, and if we decide that this is still the best option, and then, you know, we can go from there, would be my thought.
I mean, that puts, giving them six years without being checked based on our policies, that's what we should be doing, so...
And Clerk Trap did take the time to write this IT RFP, or get one before we discovered this.
Well, it was posted, it has been since taken down with this. So now I would have to readjust everything in there, because there's a lot of calendar dates in there to accommodate for the change of the timeframe.
But the verbiage is all there that you need?
This would be a sealed bid, right, I'm understanding?
Yeah, it would be sealed bids, definitely.
But I think SYO was acting in good faith.
Correct.
I think they, they had the trust in the village. And here, we're just going to re-nig on it.
Great.
So Matt, obviously, I wasn't on the board at the time and don't know the details, but with the issue we had, how does SYO fall into that? Is, are they the type of company that should be monitoring and preventing something like that? Or that is not in their realm at all? Do you know?
I don't know nothing about it.
Do you?
Oh, yes, that is something that they're active about, right? Definitely, about preventing and monitoring.
After the incident, they did then, at that time, acquire multiple different firewalls and that sort of thing after the fact.
New server, updated server, everything. Because the server that we had...
They were serving, they were our IT contractor when that happened.
Yes.
And they left that open to happen, or should have probably presented us with some options to protect us, knowing that that was becoming a very serious issue around the country. I don't know, I definitely think we should go out for bid and see what else is available.
I think you're making some assumptions there that just aren't true. I don't, I think a lot of it was our own personal fault.
I think there's enough blame to go around, to that we can all have a piece.
Can I just confirm, the motion on the floor is to continue with the SYO contract, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, just to confirm. And we do have a second.
Any other, are we good? Call the roll call, please.
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
Oh.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
I would, however, like us to make a motion to go out for RFP, though. Even though we are continuing and honoring the contract, I do think we should go out for bid.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the motion then.
The motion was, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion I just reconfirmed is to continue with the SYO contract.
It was continuing the contract, it had...
And the vote was four-three to continue.
I think we can. Mark has said so, that we could still reject any and all bids.
So continue until we have...
I'd like to see what other prices we have out there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Then I, I would like to correct my vote, yes. I'd like to continue, and I would like the quotes, extra quotes.
Well, it passed anyways, but we can't change your vote until the motion is rescinded.
Well, just for the record, I misunderstood it.
Okay.
Thank you.
But it is four-three to continue with the SYO contract. That's up to you guys, how you, am I getting instruction to re-list the RFP?
Make a motion to go out for bid on the IT contract.
Before or after this one is up, right?
No.
Any discussion on that?
Are we, were you some of any pushback from SYO if we do go out for bid? Is he going to be upset that maybe... Is he going to be upset that maybe we're undermining him? Or is there any legal ramifications for us going out for bid while under a contract?
And, um, did you want him to?
We could.
Did you want him to sit? Do you want me to ask Mark?
Yes.
Mark, are you still?
Mark, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, um, Mr. Care has asked, would there be possibly any ramifications if we, um, go out for?
Go out for bid while under, while under contract.
Well, there, there could be, but as long as, uh, the village continues to make payments under the extension, then SYO really don't have a complaint. Uh, so, uh, it's possible that, uh, they would take umbrage at, uh, we, we have this existing contract, now you're going out for bids. Uh, they may wonder, well, what should we do? Uh, we don't want to bid against ourselves. We claim we already have an agreement, or at least an extension of an agreement. Uh, so, uh, it, it could be, uh, somewhat, um, uh, I, I guess contentious, uh, maybe that's too strong of a word, but they might not be terribly happy about it, but if you continue to make the payments while you're undergoing this process, uh, I really don't know what their legal complaint would be. Uh, I will say, though, if, if ultimately, uh, your, uh, your goal is that we, we really don't approve of this extension, although you've already made a motion and, and you've approved that, so that's pretty well in place. The other thing, if you continue to make the payments, which you should, at some point, and then you say, you get back to the legal argument that I mentioned before, well, the former president didn't have the, uh, actual authority to do this, so, uh, let's get into my lawyer's bigger-than-your-lawyer-type, uh, situation. As, when you continue to make payments, it's going to be an indication that you're accepting this extension. So, I would, I would suggest, uh, I am suggesting that, uh, you have the motion that was made and passed to continue with SYO. So you have that, I would treat that as being in place, but you're still allowed to go out, uh, for bids, uh, just to see what the, uh, the conditions, uh, out in the marketplace are. Uh, you can even say, if you choose, uh, I think it, I, I, I don't know technology, I, I'm a Luddite, but, uh, I think that, uh, you could even, your request for proposals, say, uh, we want, uh, numbers starting in, uh, 2024, or, uh, the middle of 2023. In other words, that you're not asking for current numbers, you're looking for information to make a decision when it comes up, uh, in 2025. Uh, so you can go ahead, uh, and go out for bids, but that's not going to supersede or override the motion that was made and approved to continue with SYO.
Right, and it's general practice, so, as, um, for example, we will be going out for bid for, um, garbage. You don't wait until your contract ends before you go, so it is a general practice, and if we have our caveat in there of accepting and rejecting all bids, we are covered.
Okay.
Can I ask Mark a question in regards to, if, if the president acted roguely on this and signed this contract, or is the president bonded or covered? Or is there any, anything, if we did decide to switch and SYO said, well, I'm suing you, could this then be put back for, on, on her bond or her coverage?
Well, you'd have to make that claim when it, when, and if that happens. I believe, um, all of the, uh, primary elected officials, the clerk, the president, the treasurer, um, are, and maybe US trustees, but, uh, the, the principal office holders, a condition of, uh, holding the office is the execution or binding of a proper bond. So, uh, the, the president should have been bonded at the time. Uh, whether, uh, a claim like this is something, uh, that, uh, the bond company, uh, would pursue or come in and defend, uh, I don't know the answer to that at this point in time, uh, but, uh, there should be bonding in place. Coverage is always, uh, the issue, uh, once you determine, uh, if there is in fact, uh, a, a bond in place.
Thank you.
Okay, any other conversation? Could you read the motion again, though?
At this point, it's just, I mean, with Mr. Parker's motion, just basically, I gotta let this thing ride and see what's going on.
But you're.
Could you read the motion?
Trustee Parker, your motion was to go out for bid for the IT contract, though?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, yep, that was.
For current or for a certain period?
For future consideration?
I would think, yeah, it could be for future.
Uh, I don't think a timeframe was established.
According to our attorney, we're stuck.
No.
So what we like to do?
I think for the future, yes, yeah, we need to file protocol.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, it can't hurt.
I mean, and no more, as you call it, rogue situations, you're.
So do you want to say?
A timeframe?
This ends in 25? So you want to see where we're at in 25?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I, at that point, if we're going to go that far, we're not going to even, we're not going to go out for bid. Because they're not going to even give you, they're not going to say, well, this is my expected price in three years.
We'll just wait until we get closer.
Let me say, I, I, I'm not saying, future as in future past today, like, whatever it is for, whatever that timeframe would be, if we have to go through, get bids, approvals, and it can go into effect in July. I'm just saying, let's go out for bid, let's see where it's at, and make, make, look at it next month.
I think you're absolutely right, these were the people that were part of our. Um, what, what'd they do?
Bring somewhere?
Yes, thank you for the word, yes. And it's, it's, it's awfully tough to, to maintain confidence when somebody lets them. And like you said, it just wasn't their fault, but it was everybody's fault at that point. But it's still hard to keep trust and faith until, you know, when the board of residents got to pay out the money, even though.
Like Mark said, it can't hurt to go out for bid.
So if you're going to continue with the motion, can we put a timeframe on it, though? Do you want currently? Do you want current for the next three years?
Current, whatever timeframe.
Do you want 20, 25?
Effectively go in for the, whatever, the two or three years.
That are still held within.
It's 23, so 24 will be next year, contract's ended in 25.
May of 25, it's around the corner.
Yeah, let's just start in 24.
Okay, do you have the motion?
Yes, a motion by Parker, um, second by Fowler.
Could you call a roll, please?
Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
No.
Edwards?
No.
Care?
No.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries for three.
Okay, thank you, and moving on to our 102 Church Street rezoning. Um, as you can see, it has been rezoned.
Not zoned, rezoned, combined, right?
Combined, sorry, I do apologize. Um, it has been combined into the single parcel, um, which was the recommendation, uh, from the Planning Commission. With that, it has asked to be put back on our agenda for the rezoning. Um, hold, hold on, I'll give you the table or floor a minute. Um, Ms. Rap could not be here, uh, she had to go out for business, so she did apologize, or otherwise she would be here. I'm sure she's watching right now. Um, I have in here for you the email explaining, and then you can also see that the parcels have been combined per the Bruce Township Assessing Department. The floor is open.
I'd like to make a motion that we move.
So.
I, I just had a question.
Okay.
Since that, uh, I was on the planning commission and didn't make the recommendation at that time, because our, our limitations were, we either had residential or the commercial district. But now our planning commission is looking at the mixed-use districts, and looking at the way that a commercial zone area actually comes up to the sidewalk, with buildings going around the street, and the sky, or two, three stories high. And it's right there at, at, at a residential area, right across the street from that, this church. So it's, I, I've started listening to more of what was going on in the planning commission as far as the mixed-use districts, and I think it, it would suit that a little more comforting to the residents and to the people that want to do the business there, as opposed to just throwing a commercial district out there. And, Lord forbid that, you know, they're, they're going to make, they're going to stay here, but if they ever sell it, someone comes in and whacks the whole thing down, and now you're looking at that face right there across the library, building going straight up, sidewalks all the way to the building. So that's, that's my thought of the, the mixed-use district.
What's involved with a mixed-use district?
Mr. Parker, can I ask you to add a little bit on that?
Yeah, currently, the, our mixed-use district is where our office use is. And it, we're looking and talking with the plan, on the planning board about expanding some of the usages, changing that slightly, looking at some parking, uh, potential issues and, and whatnot. I guess to just piggyback off what Zach was just saying, my thought, just to open this up to just giving it a full free rein, CBD, Central Business District zoning, without any considerations to the, the setbacks, the, the usages of it. I mean, you're putting a, what they're asking for, an event center, party place, I don't know if they're going to be looking for liquor license or anything, right in a residential neighborhood. And what, that was kind of the buffer, right? You have a street, you have a, a library, you have another street, and then you have the downtown or the central business there, which I know the library's in the central business, but I think you're just opening up a long-term can of worms where, what's next? Right? You guarantee them CBD, the house that's there, nice house, maybe they're coming back saying, hey, I want to be a bed and breakfast, or I want an establishment here, and then we just roll right north down the street or up the street, which is bad, is good, I don't know, I can't make the decision for everyone, but I, I just feel it's.
I'm for the reps of what they want to do.
Yeah, but we just got to look at.
Yes, I, I.
The long term, and if they sell, and we've got central business, any of those approved listings or usages in the, in the CBD area, you're going to have a pretty hard time trying to stop someone else from coming in and doing that.
So you do, as far as your, your special land use mixed with the mixed use, they're still permitted to do those functions of what they want to do. But if they do happen to sell, then it would.
Yeah.
It, it's not the commercial, um, zoning, which.
Yeah, I mean, our commercial zoning, I think, says, I don't have it written front of me, I think it's 15-foot setbacks from residential, which, where it's not residential, property line to property line. And then the other issue that is kind of popped up in my head is, we do have the house that's basically wrapped around the parking lot. So now, are, we can, creating a R1 island within the central business now, because across the street, central, everything around the house is going to be Central Business District, what do we do there? You know, I just would ask, you know.
Remind me the current zoning of it.
It's R1.
Mm-hmm. So even doing the multi, it's not even in the office to be considered the mixed use?
No, currently it's not.
But that's, that's what the planning commission is currently working on.
We're working on defining.
Special land use and the mixed use.
The mixed use.
To give, give them what they want, but not to, to throw that drastic commercial designation right there at that spot.
So we don't really have a mixed use yet?
No, they're working on it right now.
We don't have it defined as mixed use. The, the current, the current office district was always considered our mixed deuce, mixed-use district, because it is a combination of businesses and residential. It just hasn't been defined as mixed use.
So how, when's this all supposed to happen?
It, it's, it's in the process.
I mean, because if, as much as I agree with you, if you want to go this way, it's going to, it's going to delay these people another month, another two months, another three months, and they're never going to be able to open this place. And they've already been waiting for how many months now? And now all of a sudden, we're changing the game on them?
I'm not changing the game.
Last, last month, Zach, you said.
I'm not changing, yes, last month, but we weren't.
They've done everything that you've said that they needed to do.
I am real leery of the fact that down the road, this might happen. Down the road, it's, it's, I mean, money's money. You get offered a certain amount, you're going to, you're going to sell, and, and, because you got, they're going to get the hell out of you. And you're going to sell, and then the people are stuck looking at that, because they're going to whack down the church, it's gone.
Well, I think the reason.
How do we protect what's there and still give them what they want?
I think the reason.
If you had a mixed use in place already, I would totally agree with you.
I don't think it's the rap's fault that we don't have our ducks in the row with the mixed use. They're investing into a beautiful historic church near our downtown area. They want, they're investing in our local community, that could have been sold anywhere across the country.
Yeah, and, I mean, they, they, they also presented that, at the, when they were here at the last meeting, that they had other churches that were ready to come in. So part of rezoning, you have to show that it can't be used as it's currently zoned, right? They clearly stood up here and told us they had another church ready to come in. So it can clearly be used as it's zoned, so, and I'm not saying I want to stick with that, but just to go straight up central business, the long-term ramifications, uh, I, I don't like. I would recommend they go back to planning, maybe planning forums, a, a workshop with them, a work group, discuss concerns with setbacks and noise, odor, lighting, stuff like that. They're going into a residential neighborhood, and if we're not going to look out for the residents and the people that are there, that will be coming in the future, what are we doing?
Is there anyone here that can answer for me, um, what the parameters are on alcohol, sales, not, not through a store, but through an event venue? How far away do you have to be from a school or a church?
500 feet.
500 feet?
But it could still be done with the church's permission. It would be the pastor.
So we just keep, well, okay.
The reason we entertain doing this is because they're right on the, on the border of the Central Business District. And we were all happy when they bought it, they were going to, I don't know if you've been in there lately, but they're, they're doing a great job, spending a ton of money.
What are they doing? Because.
Yeah.
What permits do we have out, Catherine?
Um, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Well, they were doing stuff earlier until they were said, you got to get the, have the inspector here to, to make sure that things are going. So they just did, they trawled pews and stuff like that.
Is Mr. Clark still on?
Mr. Clark, are you still there?
I am.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, can a special land use be designated for that spot for the, for the congregation of church?
If it falls in the.
This board designated it?
You, you have, you have special land use provisions, uh, in each of your zoning categories. Uh, if you look at your zoning ordinance, uh, in the zoning ordinance, there are what are called, uh, principal uses, I believe is the term, uh, and that's true in residential districts, commercial district, uh, office district, industrial. And then, uh, there are, uh, a category or a listing even of, uh, permitted, uh, uses upon approval for a special land use. And so, the question you're asking is, are there special land use, uh, uh, special land uses permitted in a single-family residential zoning? I understand that, uh, that current location is zoned single-family. You'd have to look at your zoning ordinance and see, uh, what special land uses are permitted in residential, uh, zoning. Uh, without looking at the ordinance, I suspect, uh, those uses in a residential, uh, residentially-zoned area are probably more limited than they would be, uh, in, say, a commercial area, uh, commercially-zoned area, or, uh, an industrially-zoned area. Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you what those permitted, uh, uses under a special land use, uh, request would be, uh, but typically, uh, they're allowed in some manner or form in your zoning ordinance, uh, depending on the type of zoning.
Could I, if I could just throw out an idea for us, um, because I, I err with Mark, yes, I, I, I'm sorry, Matt. Um, I see what, I see where you're coming from in having the buffer there, they could go right up to that lot line of which we don't see, because right now it's, it's, it's land. Um, and if this is the question that we're not quite sure of the answer for, this could be something that we could also find out an answer for by next Monday and have that, um, along with the other, the water rate answer in that, and have that, that added to a special meeting before budget, if that would be amenable to everyone.
I, I still feel this needs, there's, the concerns need to be addressed. I, I still feel this needs, there's, the concerns need to be addressed with, with the property owner and see if they're willing to talk with us on it.
I think they've done everything we've asked for them. I mean, they've been coming up to this board for five months now. They've done every single thing we've asked. We've had some parameters on mixed land use for, since August, when the new master plan came out. Now it's just coming to light once they finally get their parcels combined. I think they've done every single thing we've asked of them, and now they're finally done that, and we're trying to back...
Yeah, I don't think it has anything to do, in my mind, with the mixed land use. It's just clearly fully rezoning into central business. It, it's not a good practice, not in a residential neighborhood, not, not that, not like that. I mean, there, there is no buffer then. Where's the buffer?
Yeah, because I can see your point, Nolan. It's, you said earlier, you know, it's, it's not their fault we don't have the mixed use in order and... Just to play devil's advocate, because I, I look at both sides of everything. It's also not our fault they purchased it knowing it's not in the central business and that it is residential. So if we can bring those two together, I think we can probably come to a resolution that everybody's satisfied with. Because we have to look at the long term, and we have to be stewards of this community. We can't look at short term. And, I mean, God bless the Raps, they say, no, this is what we want to do, it's Romeo. But nothing lasts forever, and they're not going to last forever. So we need to do as much as we can as stewards of the community. And I'm hoping we can find a way to bring everyone together that satisfy both sides in a very timely manner.
A month ago, it was okay.
I don't, I don't think we voted a month ago, did we?
We did, we voted it down.
We obviously didn't have our ducks in a row, and we didn't tell them that this is, this is, you know, on the palate. A month ago, it was fine, because otherwise we would have brought it up then.
I don't think it was fine. I think there was an immediate motion made to approve it.
It was never brought up previously.
There was an immediate motion made to approve it.
Hold on, let's, stop. We, we need to have one at a time. Matt has the floor.
You've been stringing these people for five months.
I didn't spring, stringing nobody on, Matt.
Excuse me.
This concern? Yes, sir.
Matt has the floor. Thank you.
So is he talking to me, is he got the floor, he's talking to people?
You're stringing these people, the planning commission, whatever, is stringing these people along. They've got money invested. They need to start getting some revenue in, and...
I, I, can I speak now? Are you done?
Yeah, go ahead. I just...
As I raise the concern...
What do we have to come up with next month?
That's why I'm, sorry, Zach.
Maybe next month, they're gonna do the 17 buildings right down the street from here, right?
Okay, trustee Fowler, you have the floor.
Yes. I, I spoke my concern. When, when the Raps first purchased the place, I, I was for it, because the, keeping the church there, that's what I was for.
Wait, may I interrupt?
Yes.
You were for zoning it a central business district, or you were for making it an event?
Making the improvements of which they wanted to use it for, an entertainment hall. If that was the only thing that they could do and use it for, then I was for that, that aspect there.
Okay, but you never told them you would put it in, you were for central business district?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And after that, the meetings, watching the planning commission meetings and them going through their, their, their multi or mixed use, a better alternative came. So why stay locked into something when there's another situation that's gonna benefit everybody? As opposed to just benefiting those that want to change it? Because like, like I said, sooner or later, they're gonna sell. And if they sell it, there goes the old tower, there goes everything.
We don't know that.
You know what?
But, but once you give them that zoning, any use listed, you're gonna have an extreme hard time saying, no, you can't do that.
Right, once you, once you take a zoning forward, you can't walk it back.
I'm suggesting we have a, send it to planning, let them sit down with a workshop, talk about concerns, and see what we can get addressed. If we can limit the usages, talk about some of the other concerns with setbacks. I'm sure no one wants a building built 15-foot from a house line. And then let's move on and see where we go from there, because I just, yeah, I've already said my piece.
Rather than waiting for a planning commission meeting, is there anything we can do, fast action to appease everybody that we can try to bring forth for a special meeting on Monday, where we can come together as a board, discuss our options to...
See, I don't, I don't think we have the authority to tell them what they're gonna do with their rezoning. They would have to sit down and have a discussion and be willing to look and address concerns. I think that's, yeah, I don't think we can just tell them, hey, you gotta do this, 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 and this. That's, that's not how it works.
Well, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
Well, that, that motion was made last month. That is what we turned down.
Yeah. Can we ask, actually, if it got denied, can we ask Mark, does this have to go back to a public hearing and, and re-addressed if it was denied?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think that it does. I think you, you could do that, a couple of things. First of all, the, the recommendation is by the planning commission, and it's just that, it's a recommendation. The board of trustees, the council, you have the, not only the authority, but the obligation to consider it and make a decision. You either grant the rezoning or you deny it. That's your choice. You're not bound by the planning commission. What came before the board last month was, while the zoning has, has always been at issue, the question was related to the lot combination. It was very narrow, is grant the rezoning and we'll, we'll get the lot combination later. I'm putting that in, I'm paraphrasing, if you will. And so the planning commission, as I understand it, made a recommendation for the rezoning, provided that the lots were combined. So last month, when the matter came before the board, the lots had not yet been combined. So the, the, the motion was made and it was turned down. The motion was made to rezone it, which was turned down because the lots had not been combined. Now they've been combined, so I don't think you need to send it back for another public hearing. Could you do that? Yes, you can. You can send it back to the planning commission for whatever inquiry or discussion that you feel should be had. It would be up to the planning commission to flush that out. But the, the decision whether to, to rezonate, rezonate or not is yours. And it should be based on the, the use of the land. It should be based on the placement of the land within the village. It should not be, in my opinion, based on the, the people or the persons who own the property. Because the rezoning goes with the property. It's not personal to the owner. So whether the Raps own it for a long time or a short time, or whoever owns it, that zoning is gonna be in place until it's changed. It goes with the property, not the person. So you can look at what's permitted in your central business district. And if you rezonate to that, which you have every ability to do, if you rezonate to that, then those uses are going to be permitted. You, you can't, you, you can't engage in parcel-specific zoning on an ad hoc basis from one meeting to another. And so it's, it's within your purview to grant the request, or deny the request, or send it back. But I do think you have the ability, the ability, if you choose, to make the decision tonight.
Can I ask Mark another question related to the, is, is there any, any concern we have to have with that house that falls in the middle of the parking area, basically, that would be an island in a central business district? Is there any concern with that?
Well, I'm not a planner. I would, I would just, I'm, I'm getting a little bit over my skis on this, but I would hazard a guess that having isolated parcels of a different zoning than those that surround it may not be such a great idea. But, and I don't mean to answer a question with a question, but one of the questions I have is, did the owner of that home, have you received any input from the owner of that property with respect to the, the rezoning request?
Did the planning commission receive anything from that resident?
That was before I was...
Yes, she did. They were concerned about the, the development of the property in itself. I think the Millers submitted a letter. The one house right on West St. Clair, they were concerned of the fact that it, the church expanding itself to the sidewalks. The Raps did assure them that everything was gonna be the same, and they keep that facility the same. So they calmed all the neighbors' worst worries. But as I just said earlier, if they sell the property, the designation, just like Mark says, it goes with the property.
Yeah, that's the concern.
So are you telling me office has, what are the setbacks of office versus CBD?
Office and CBD, I'd have to look, look that up. I don't know off the top of my head what the difference is in the setbacks. They may be same along residential lots, but the usage is different, office to CBD. And I, well, and then the front setback is definitely different on office.
The banquet facility, I think, is fantastic. I'm just worried down the road that when they depart and zone central business district, that stuff's gone. Somebody's gonna come in here and say...
Sounds like the Raps want to maintain it as is and, and keep it nice. I, I don't see any issue that they would have with sitting down and addressing these, so it can be written into a contingent rezoning.
I would just like to ask that if this, if, if this isn't going to be settled tonight, that we for sure have it settled by next month, so that these people know what, what it is they, where they're headed. The summer months are coming, they've talked about weddings and that sort of thing. And to continue to wait would, so I'm wondering if it need be, planning commission meets, has an extra meeting in the month or something in order to get this done in, in an actual decision by next month? Does that seem feasible?
I don't, I don't see why it couldn't be. I don't know if any planning's in the audience.
We have a motion on the floor, on the table.
So they're, they're almost right.
Lisa, you see any issue with having an extra meeting next month? Or even a workshop? I'm asking you.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we have a motion on the table, though.
Okay, are we discussing, are we done discussing?
I have a quick question. So as far as we know, they're ready to open? Does anybody know?
No, I don't.
No, yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know how it's gonna flow, but I, I think building inspector had requested for that use, fire suppression, and which, I, yeah, there's, there's no permits currently pulled. I, I don't know what kind of work they've already been able to do.
There's no electrical, there's nothing, but it...
They can't do anything.
They're waiting for the decision from us to start anything.
So where's this, other than they've had it for several months, where's the sense of urgency coming from if...
No permits have been pulled?
Pardon me?
I said if no permits have been pulled?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So last month, we were at the same position, right where we're at now. Get the land, get the lots united, and we'll approve it. We told them that.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did. It's right in the notes here.
That's her email.
That's her email.
We told them that.
There was, there was...
All you have to do is this, and then a month later, we've got another problem. What's gonna happen, you know, come May 10th? We gonna have another one? Another list of problems? I just, it's every month that you keep telling...
I expressed my concerns, Matt, and...
Stop looking at today and look down the road. Look down the road, for all these residents, look down the road.
This, this wouldn't be a standard rezoning, in my mind, anywhere. Just to throw this fully out there into the residential district. And for us just to approve it, just because maybe friends or relationships or whatever, they're whole, you know, they want to move on and get their business open. Again, it, it's not our, you know, it's not our fault that they purchased it and it was R1, and they want something different. We've got to do our due diligence, stewards of the village, and do what's right for the long term, not just for today, tomorrow, and maybe next year.
Okay, if we have discussed, could you read the motion one more time, please, clerk?
Motion by Bartholomew, second by Care, to approve the rezoning request as presented. Did I get that correct? Yes.
Okay, could you please call a roll?
Sure, sure. Bartholomew?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Fowler?
No.
President Poznanski?
No. I would like us to come back next month, and we expect an answer from this board. I request that our planning commission do what they need to do, because we will have an answer for them next month.
Just to clarify, we just gave them our answer. So if they're coming back next month, they have to come back with different information, right?
Correct. Information to address your concerns.
Do we need a motion to send this back to planning?
Hold on, guys.
Hey. Do we need, yeah, do we need a motion to send it back to planning, form, suggestion to form a workshop with planning to sit down with property owners?
If you would like clarity, go ahead.
I think that's a good idea.
I'll make a motion to send the rezoning back to planning with the idea of forming a workshop to discuss concerns.
And meet with the...
And meet with the property owners, yeah.
If possible, could that happen sooner than the regularly scheduled meeting? Do we have a special meeting?
I'll second the motion.
We got a second discussion, I mean, we can look into doing that. I'd have to see timing and, obviously, we'd have to get with the property owners and planning. I don't know if planning, how quickly we can have a special meeting. Yeah, we'd have to vote as the commission to form a workshop.
Could you read the motion when you're done writing? Give you a minute.
Okay, I think I got it. Motion by Parker, second by Russell, send the zoning back to the planning commission for a workshop and discussion with the property owners. Did I miss anything?
No, I was looking at dates, sorry.
Could you call a roll, please?
Sure. Where am I? Parker?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Moving into new business, we have finally our bond authorizing resolution. We do have representation here, should anybody have any questions. I did, well, it's in the next one, anyways. So, hope you read it. This gives us our resolution to continue taking the steps forward to put the bond out. Any questions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
I'll give you a motion, except this.
I'll support.
Motion by Fowler, support by Edwards, authorizing the bond resolution. Do you want me to read any of it? It's really long. Okay. Could you please call a roll, Clerk Trent?
Yes. Fowler?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
All right, Edwards?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Moving into our bond roadwork estimates.
Number two, Madam President, should that be like northeast and southeast, probably?
Yeah.
Did I, okay. A number two, north and southeast, yes, thank you. Yes. So basically, the whole east side is what that is, trying to define. So we have our cost estimate coming in for the roadwork that we're proposing for this season. Came in a bit higher, we were hoping at... We were hoping at 700. It came in at 1.3. You have included for you the map of the streets that would be done. As you can see, some of them specifically surrounding the Prospect Street property are not included as we are unsure and do not want to put in new streets there to be used then for construction. Then you also have the quote for all the other quadrants. So in looking at this, it became apparent that the, could be done in a three-year step if everything went according to plan, which we know it won't, but we can plan. So it just looked to make sense to do, right now, we do our northwest. Next year, we do the whole east side as there are less streets, starting off with the south as that would be where Peach Fest is, so we want that done first thing in the spring. And then we would be moving into the southwest side the following year. I keep saying, even though those are three years, I keep saying no longer than five because like I've already said that not everything happens according to plan. This isn't taking into account yet anything we might run into underneath. Also, I would just like to point out that the total estimated cost under all of this is 6.281, so 6,281,000, of which we have not bonded for that much. So, the proposition, I've been working with our Treasurer Caroline, and we have been discussing, as you'll see later on, we have our investment policy and that's why that popped up on here in investing. So as the, we are sitting here, we could be a little more aggressive. I mean, if I said 100%, that would be accurate as we are currently doing zero. So start investing our money very safe. Caroline would be keeping track of that in CDs and trying to grow our investment there in order to help pay for this at the back end so that we don't end up with a bond and then going back out to the people and asking for more money and then only having half of the community want to do it because their roads are already done. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I also put in here the timeline. I've been asked multiple times, has it been out for bid yet? No, we are still in the process. You guys can see the timeline. I have one from the bond company, Benzinski, and then the other timeline from Mike McDonald, our engineers at HRC, going forward, continuing the scope of the work. So essentially, as soon as we are done putting this out for bid, we're sitting down figuring out next year so that we can have the whole east side ready to go in, for this, as soon as we can break ground in the spring so that the south could be done first. But, bringing it here for you guys. Discussion?
So initially, the thought process presented was do the best first. But now we're kind of looking at sections. So is it do the best first of this section and then move to the best first of this section? Or is it we're just going to do this section and then this section and this?
Well, essentially, we are doing the best first. This quad that is proposed for this first year has some of the best roads. So our best roads at the time the study was done was a number four, 10 was the best. We have a lot of twos and threes. This had at least a couple fours. And considering we're going out for bid halfway through the season, I mean, I'm really just hopeful that someone will even bid on this for us to actually get going this year. So that's kind of where it is. We are doing the best first, there's just not a lot of them. And then moving forward, they're mostly twos and threes and negatives.
So when you move to the east side, north and south, essentially because they're all so bad?
They're really, there's really going to pick one. And just going with logistics of our seasons in our town, it just made feasible sense to do the south first, giving, not waiting till later in the season of what goes on in that quadrant. So really, that's where we're at.
And knowing that it might not be realistic to start this year, if it gets pushed to next year, could we still continue with this similar...
I don't know. I guess I'd want to reevaluate at that point.
Okay, all right.
We would have to see how much we could, it's also how much, given the season that we have, how much could feasibly get done.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? Are we good to move forward, assuming, I'm not going to put a hard and fast plan in here, but assuming this is kind of where we're headed?
That's the way I would go, yes.
Okay.
Are we going to include these possible streets to postpone that are indicated, the four of them?
Pardon me?
There's four streets that are possibly postponed based on current condition. Is that included in the 6.28 number?
The ones around the property? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, on the second, this first page after the title, the engineer's estimate, there's four streets that say they possibly could postpone based on their current condition. I mean, if we're heading over our number a little bit, is that something we want to exclude? Or just proceed as presented?
That's up to you guys.
What are you looking at, Noel? Can you tell me? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, on the very first page after the intro, there's four different streets totaling a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And I think that...
Yeah, Fremont Rawls, Church and Newbury.
And isn't that the postponement because of the potential sale of the property and construction? It's not a permanent postponement, it's just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's construction there, then they'll avoid those roads for now.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Everything can, as we head into it, anything that we run into, everything can be adjusted as we go, leaning on our engineers and the professionals here.
Yeah, that's what we have to do.
Okay.
So yeah, traditionally, you know, looking at projects like this, starting best first is somewhat of a standard practice. But most of the time, that, from what I've seen, is when you have roads that are, like you said, on your scale, at the top end of that scale, not at the bottom. We're pretty much at a point where most of our roads are failing. So I would like to maybe look at possibly, starting with the worst roads first and getting those done and then reallocating differently to get to the best roads. Because we've already got roads that are crumbling, falling apart, a lot worse, like you said, negative scores. So, and if you're saying this may or may not happen in the next three years, maybe five years, if, at all, what's the potential that we tell these people in five years, we just don't have the money now, your road is a negative 10 and we don't have the money? Where the roads that are at a four or five, maybe they're still maintaining and they're not as bad as the roads that are already failing, if that makes sense? Because if we're looking at potentially not being able to finish this project or not having the money now, maybe we should do this reverse.
I guess I don't know what to say, but that's not what the engineers suggest. Hubbell, Roth and Clark, when they made their presentation, do the best roads first because they're the quickest. You can get them done faster at least expense and you can get more mileage on your money.
And traditionally, yeah, I see that.
That's not me, that's, that's just someone that's got experience in doing this type of thing.
Right, fixing a four, at a four, will cost us less than if we wait the five years until it's at a one and that costs more money to fix what was a four at one time.
And I respect that. I'm still concerned, like you said, that we may not get to that point and we may be running low on money. And then we're telling the people that are a one or a negative, hey, sorry.
Well, I think you're just trying to predict the future.
Trying to what?
Predict the future.
I think, I think that's what we're trying to do. And, and cover, cover ourselves. I mean, when we get to that, that point, what do we do? What do we tell the residents that are on, on a negative street already? That, hey, sorry, you're going to have to wait another five, 10 years? What do we do? Just putting the question out there.
At that point, we pull it out of our general fund. We really hope that we invest enough money that we're going to be making enough to cover it. It's really, we didn't bond for enough money.
With the cost of inflation and, and out of control at this point, if we wait to do the worst roads later, they're going to cost even that much more. If we do some of the worst roads now, at least we're under this current rate because five years from now, it's going to be astronomical. I mean, I poured a driveway last summer and by the time it started to the time it finished, my concrete doubled in price. And it wasn't the person who poured it, it's where it came from. So, and that's not going to stop. So if we start with the worst first, at least we're getting it at today's dollars versus two, three, four, five years from now. Unbelievable.
And then like what Megan said and what the engineers have told us, by the time then you do get to the fours, they're ones. And now they're all the worst roads.
Yeah, you go the same way. By the time you get to the twos, they're a negative two, right? So that's going to cost even more. So e, e, either way you're looking at this, it's going to cost more if we wait.
I would listen to the engineers, that's, that's their job.
Whichever way we go forward, it would be the best suggestion to at least, yes, stick to a quadrant, not be doing this road here, jumping over here, doing that. That's time and money to move the equipment, go over there. And then when we go to fix the roads again in the next however many years to do, go, oh, well, this one was done first and then hurry up and move over here. At least if we do some sort of quadrant thing, we can, know when to focus on them the next time this ever comes around. And we do, in our multi-year planning going ahead, already have, putting in the budget, planning for fixing the crack filling, all of that. I really don't have a estimate as to what in the world we're going to actually need at that point. But I can't remember if I asked for 40 or 50 grand to start getting put in at that point. Do you recall how much it was?
I'd like to see a long-term plan that doesn't let it get to this point again.
Right.
Where we're looking at sections of the village every so many years and just doing the roads.
I agree. We need to continue, we need to, there, in my asset management class, their communities are doing Pacer studies every year. So as soon as we fix this quadrant, you do a Pacer study to then see where you're at so that as you continue to go forward, you can see the rate of deterioration, how fast we need to jump into fixing these cracks and how much money we need to put at that. So, yeah, I was going to be bringing forward this month, but the agenda just kind of grows itself. We need an asset management policy ordinance so that we do continue to put these things in place.
Well, in light of how slow-moving the world is right now with contractors and how rapidly inflation is growing and knowing that Peach Fest is a consideration, I would prefer to start in the southeast to get that done. Because I, as much as I hope and pray, I do not have confidence that we're going to get anything done this year and it's not because of us.
To do that this year, you would literally be starting at that time. We couldn't start there this year.
Yeah, I think some chances are not starting this year.
Then that's fine, but I'm thinking...
Yes, and next year we would start there.
Yeah.
So if at that time we come to that, I would agree with you.
Okay, but so if we can't start this year, then we could start southeast next year. But if we can start this year, don't start there. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I would agree. Okay. Are we good?
Does this need motion movement or anything?
Not really. I was bringing it before you guys, making sure we were all under, on the, on the same page and of the understanding. Okay, moving into our discussion of DDA Board responsibilities being given to the Planning Commission. Trustee Parker, you brought this to the table?
Yeah, I brought this just with the current situations that have arose. I thought it would be best for us at this board to have this discussion, discussion only, to talk with Mark and figure out if something, or this board doesn't need to take an action, what do we need to do and how does that process happen?
Is that a question you're directing?
That's to Mark, yeah.
Mr. Clark, did you hear that question?
I did.
Okay.
Under the statute that governs the creation of downtown development authorities for communities under 5,000 residents, which the village is, the village or any municipality that fits within that population cap can have the functions of the DDA Board fulfilled by the Planning Commission. If you choose to do that, it would have to be by ordinance. You would have to adopt an ordinance, providing that all the functions that are by statute and your existing ordinance allocated or fulfilled by the, the Board that was created instead undertaken and fulfilled by the Planning Commission. The village does have the lawful or legal authority to do that. It would have to be done by ordinance and it doesn't change what functions a DDA Board does. It doesn't change what authority the Board has. It doesn't change what limitation the Board has. It merely provides, that being, the statute merely provides that those functions can be assigned or given to the Planning Commission. So in essence, if you chose to do that, it would require an ordinance to that effect and those duties that currently are done by the Downtown Development Authority Board by your existing ordinance would instead be done by the Planning Commission.
Hey, Mark, is that? And then the, the executive director then would be an employee of the village?
No, because, again, the Board, the Board functions are carried out by the Planning Commission. And so I don't think my knee-jerk reaction is that doesn't make the person, the executive director, an employee of the village. I haven't looked at that. I just look at it, and maybe this is too simplistic of a view on my part, but I look at, if you look at your existing ordinance, you look at the statute that allows for the creation of a downtown development authority and all the responsibilities and duties of the Board, it says, those things are fairly well-spelled out. You just would superimpose the Planning Commission in that place. And so I, I, I don't think it makes the person an employee of the village, but quite honestly, I have not looked at that.
Mark, Justin again, would this, then I guess just based on what you're seeing, does this dissolve the DDA Board or does it just transfer that Board to the Planning?
It would dissolve it because if you look at the statute that, that creates the Downtown Development Authority, the enabling legislation, the provision in there tucked in that statute that says for communities or municipalities, I don't have it immediately in front of me, but the verbiage is to the effect that communities of less than 5,000 population can have the duties and responsibilities of the Board assigned to or given to the Planning Commission. So you're not going to add the DDA Board to the members of the Planning Commission or the number of Planning Commissioners you have. It would just be that body, the Planning Commission, however it exists from time to time, would act as the, the Board for the Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes?
This is Matt. The Downtown Development Authority has certain...
The Downtown Development Authority has certain rules given to it as far as members. In other words, you have to have so many people that are residents, so many people that are business owners from the central business district. How do those things blend if you put everything with the Planning Commission?
I don't think, I don't think they do blend, and that's an excellent question. I think the way that's treated, based on the wording in the statute, that those requirements, as you mentioned, for instance, if you have so many people that live within the Downtown Development Authority District, I think it's more than 100, then you need to have a resident on the Board. And there are other requirements, as you pointed out, I think those would not have to be honored, because those are fleshed out or identified based on the existence of the separate Board. And then again, later on in the statute, it says, well, these functions can be done by the Planning Committee. And so, it's my opinion that the Planning Commission, if you did that by ordinance as the statute permits, those other requirements would not be imposed or superimposed on the Planning Commission.
Mark, it's Shelley, hi.
Hi.
Just a question that might seem like obvious, but I just wanna clarify it for the record. If the ordinance is changed and it switches to Planning Commission, it, that does not have to be permanent. You can always go back and change your ordinance and re-establish a DDA Board, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You can change, you can adopt ordinances, amendments, repeal ordinances, rescind them. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Justin, why are we looking at this?
Excuse me?
Why are we looking at this? Was this yours?
Yeah, yeah, I added, like Megan said, or President Poznanski. With currently everything going on, I wanted to get the information out of town, like I said when we started. So in case this Board had to make, or decided to make movement, we were already in the know and had the information to move forward. That's why it said discussion.
All right.
Yeah.
So if they don't get their act together, we can intervene until they get their act together.
Okay, have we discussed?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Angelica's place, this is the road cost estimate that we got in our emails last month. I ran it by our engineers to see how would this affect our, you know, the end, the scope. To me, say, the main concern here was that it wasn't apples-to-apples of the plan of how we were going to be fixing the roads, that there's different depths, and it just didn't sound like this is gonna be enough, that this is, that this is going to fail sooner because it's not going to be done to the level that we're doing the rest of them. However, this was something you guys said, Matt, you had, trustee Edwards, you had mentioned maybe a special project. So, bringing it back to you guys.
So...
Real quick, Shelley, before you start, in full disclosure, I do work for the owner here and at his other properties, so I will recuse myself from discussions and voting.
Thank you. The quote that we've been provided, was that something that the representative from last month initiated? He got this quote?
Yeah, this is what we received in our emails.
Yeah.
He's here tonight, too.
Okay. And was this quote...
Everyone heard him speak. That's what it sounded like, and like I said, trustee Edwards said, well, maybe bring it back as a special. So here it is.
All right, thank you.
Moving forward, knowing that it's not gonna take 20 years, I mean, we have to pay off our bond in 15. Do you just wanna wait till next year? And specifically, as you were saying, Shelley, earlier, if this would be the first place we start next year, essentially, no matter what?
I think so. We're gonna spend the money.
I don't think he can go through another winter. He's got the contractor lined up, GPS fault, they're reputable. I've seen their work. They're talking about milling everything down to do it.
But as you saw earlier with our policy, this is over. We would, we would still need to go out for bid ourselves.
I'll make the motion that we go out to bid to do the exact same work that's described here in this proposal.
Even though our engineers said the exact same work in here is not the same level that we will be doing to the rest of our streets? That's where the concern for the engineer comes in.
And we're gonna be doing this area?
That would be the first, no, this would be the first one done in the spring of Would you like me to read it? So that we all, everybody knows, because you guys haven't seen this. Using the limits-scope of work described in the quote and comparing to the unit prices for the same-similar work provided in the quote, the quoted price of 19,275 seems a bit high. With that said, it doesn't surprise me that it's high compared to a large project that the village is undertaking, since the fixed contractor costs, like mobilization, equipment delivery, insurance, can be spread on a much larger quantity of items on a larger-scale project. To really compare the pricing to our estimate, we'd need their quote broken down to include the various specific items of work, item quotations and item unit prices. My bigger concern is with the proposed scope of work included in the quote. The quote proposes pavement milling to a depth of 1 1/2 to 2 inches, which isn't fully removing the asphalt paving and not extending to the aggregate-gravel base course, as proposed in the village project. The quote is proposing a mill of 1 1/2 to 2 of the existing pavement and to overlay a new wearing course layer of pavement over the existing leveling course layer of asphalt. We would not recommend this type of pavement treatment, since the existing pavement is cracked and alligator, excuse me, alligatored. Oh, that was an actual word. It's full depth down to the aggregate-gravel base course. If the full 3 inches to 4 inches of existing asphalt pavement is not removed down to the aggregate gravel base course, the cracks in the existing leveling course of the existing gravel will show through the new wearing course layer of asphalt very quickly, likely in a year or two. Another likely problem that may occur during the milling of the upper layer would be that significant patching to the lower leveling course would be needed. A quantity for this type of repair is included in the quote, but I'm not sure that it would be sufficient to install the wearing course. I'd be happy to discuss further.
This is from?
This is from Mike McDonald, our engineer.
Well, as much as I'd like to get this project rolling, if we're gonna start this first thing next spring, then I would just assume I'll have it all done at one time and get it done correctly.
And, yeah, and done to the proper.
I'd have to have these people have it for the year, but I think it needs to be done properly, I guess.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. Of course, it's April. Can they do this section this year? Do this section down there, the Haddam Street, this year, or when you ask?
Oh, the art group, art project?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
It'll be next spring, right?
Well, I'm sure anything could be done, but again, moving, moving your equipment is, costs money.
So you're gonna have to be any construction this year?
No, no, this year is going to be what you saw on the map of where we currently at, where we're currently at.
Just make this first thing. Okay, the northwest.
Okay, if we're not gonna make a motion, then let, no.
There was a motion, but no support.
There was no second, so it died, that's fine.
Yeah, no support.
Okay. Pardon me.
Have it done first thing.
Okay, our wastewater treatment plant purchase. Al, you are up.
Okay, I'll make this quick. We need to buy a bearing for one of our rotating biological desks. It is a 5-inch inner diameter, the total bearing is about this size. The quote that you have in front of you, at the bottom, the 3145 was just for the bearing. The 4,140 is for the bearing, and the, what's called a pillow block mount, which bearing sits inside and it attaches to the cement.
Do you just need line item one, or the top?
Yes, I would like to just get line item one, $4,140 for the bearing and the pillow block.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase. All right, hold on. Is this, before I do that, is this the only vendor we can get this from?
Yes, RBC Services, they are the primary folks for RBCs, for rotating biological contractors. So this is, it's a very specialized bearing, and they're getting harder to find and they're getting more expensive, so.
Okay, I'll continue to make a motion to purchase the bearing at the price of $4,140.
Support?
Support.
Matt got it.
Matt got it.
Al, can I ask you a quick question? I always say quick, don't I?
Sure.
Just help educate me, the bearing is to make everything move within the treatment plan, it's not for a piece of, like, a vehicle there or anything, correct?
No, it's for, it's for a, the RBC, we have 15 of them, and these are big disc stacks, they're like 25-foot-long, plastic disc stacks, they spin through the water, and they have zoological growth on them, and they are cleaning the water. They have to spin, they have to have a bearing.
Okay, thank you.
I think a field trip for the trustees are in order.
I said, could we do another tour with some of the new members?
Certainly, we just had one with a bunch of school kids.
Yeah, we just did the, yeah.
Yeah, it was really quite interesting, if you ever get a chance to set something up.
Out of curiosity, what RPM is that running at?
Probably no more than, maybe one revolution every five minutes or so, I don't know off the top of my head.
Oh, that's very, very slow.
Very, very slow, but they're very heavy and very big, so we don't run very fast.
Could you call the road, please? Parker?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, okay. We move into our DDA event permit. You have your event permit, of which was...
I'll make a motion to approve the DDA event permit contingent that all parties that are listed on the back sign off.
What was the contingency?
Everyone on the backside of the permit signs off.
Absolutely.
Clerk, PD, DPW, fire, building, electric, as appropriate.
Did we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Fowler, second. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor of approving the event permit? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed. Moving into tree board appointment. We have one appointment here. I have for you the letter of interest, so I'm putting up Mr. William Smith as nomination for the tree board.
Is he here?
Is he here tonight?
Let's see him.
Have you talked with him, Megan?
Yes, let me know he's interested. I told him to send me a letter.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. William Smith to the tree board.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the Romeo Park Citizen Task Force appointment, we put out, the trustee Russell had asked for, sent an email to the clerk and myself seeking other seats. This one person responded. Inside is your letter. So I'm asking the appointment of Ariel Follett Weiss to the...
Make a motion.
A second.
All in favor of the appointment? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed.
Is that the only person that showed interest?
As the only one who wrote a letter. That's why we're still, one more. Anybody wanna be on the, another part of the village? Okay, we have our investment policy. I don't know, Caroline, thank you, ma'am. In speaking with Caroline regarding this, we, she's looked, I really left it up to her, as this is her wheelhouse of what she would like to have in this policy, of what she feels comfortable with, or what she would like added. We did have a current draft, and then went through, the MML has, the Michigan Municipal League has draft ordinances, examples from all the, many other communities. She took those, and in that, read through them, and has for you her highlights in yellow of suggested additions, or edits, whatever.
I didn't take anything out of it, but I did compare it to the other municipalities that you had given me, Megan, and they were very, very similar, but I just added the few things that you see highlighted in yellow, is what I added. I did send this to Mark, so you might wanna get him on the...
Okay, are you there, Mark?
I am.
Okay.
To, I had emailed Mark to look at my additions, to see what his thoughts were, and if they were appropriate, you know.
Okay, do you want to ask that?
Yeah.
Okay, could you, Mark, address for the edits on the finance or the investment policy, if you could?
Yes, I did review it, and the only comment I have is the added section, or proposed added section about performance evaluation and reporting, a finance committee. The difficulty I have with it is it's not defined in the policy itself. I think it's important, and I'm glad that as part of the policy, there was a definitions section given, what all the different terms in the policy mean, but among those is not the finance committee. So, my concern is that there's mention made, the finance committee shall produce quarterly reports for the village council and so forth, but yet the finance committee is not defined. So, you are including, if you adopt it in this manner, you're including something that is not defined, and that gives me some pause.
So, if I can speak to that. So I had mentioned in the email, I didn't put it on this, because I was questioning whether we are allowed to have a finance committee, and my thoughts were treasurer, clerk, accounts payable. People who are involved with the banking and the money and everything, you know, and then that could be defined within this.
Did you hear her, Mark?
Yes, and I think Caroline mentioned in her email, she had some suggestions, and I did not respond, and for that I apologize, I've had a little health thing going on. And so, if you have, if you define the finance committee as to what, not necessarily, and I would recommend against naming a person, but again, if you name the office, if it's the clerk, if it's the treasurer, whoever you decide, that I think is important to designate and define the finance committee, but also then what, and I don't mean to answer a question with a question, but what is then the finance committee going to do? In other words, if this is the investment policy the council adopts to use or to be followed by the person who makes the investment, or investments on behalf of the village, which I assume is the treasurer, then what, what is the finance committee going to do? Is it a recommending committee? Does the treasurer then have to follow the recommendations? Or what if the treasurer disagrees with the recommendations of the finance committee? My, my question really, I guess, reduces itself to, what is the finance committee do that the treasurer's not going to do under this policy if you adopt it? It seems to me that it... It seems to me that it's adding a component to the investment policy that is unnecessary.
So what was your thought, they act as advisory or?
Just second eyes on everything is what my understanding was, reading the other ordinances. So, I mean, I know it wasn't in ours, but I thought, well, maybe it's something that we need, maybe it's unnecessary, you know. This is step one, we haven't done any, I'm not running in the office tomorrow and invest in, you know, a million dollars. This is like step one to get this kind of started, you know.
So minus the finance committee, would it just be the treasurer who's determining where to put that money and monitoring it and knowing what investments are the best option?
I'm sure with guidance from our accountants and, you know.
But theoretically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as if you read just a little, that the treasurer shall make such investments and only such investments as a prudent person, blah, blah. It is the treasurer, so I guess the finance committee is more advisory and even if you did go against that, like, you do what you want, you're the ultimate. So I don't know, I mean.
So should we?
Do you want to?
Table until?
Do we get a definition there?
Further information?
Yeah, I think that would help us.
Do we have to make a motion to table or can we just?
You could, if you clean it up in the minutes that way.
Table the investment policy updates for further information.
All in favor of tabling for further answers? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mark.
Can I just ask one quick question? So is everything else, like the glossary and it, it's okay, it's mainly the finance committee part of it?
Yeah, and the definition and what it...
Define that or decide to strike it or whatever?
Or not, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think she needs, she can reach out to, you have contact with Mark, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, at least it's all organized and in, I can only do so much.
The organization is great.
We have our village vehicle.
Sell it.
That is in here because it, in driving it down to Detroit with clerk trap for SEMCOG, um, there were times I was looking up the local Uber or something because it made me nervous. And then, so we asked our DPW to take it in, have it looked at, so that's where we end up with the quote that, yeah, it leads a little more than an oil change, and that led us to, well, what is this vehicle really worth? What is it worth, you know, that sort of thing. Um, it's hard to pull a blue book price as, there's no blue book for police vehicles. So that's kind of where, and I couldn't print one off at that time. We've had horrible internet and phone issues for two or three days, so that's why it's written here and there's not an actual blue book print off.
If we sell this guy and do, does this go, how did we sell the last one? What was the process? Did we put it out on the?
I think we did do some kind of bid, I mean, it was posted in the local paper, but we did take bids. It was a bid process.
That was for the...
With a minimum though, we did establish a minimum.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we sell the vehicle.
I think you got a motion to...
Estimate on what it's going to cost to fix it?
It's right there.
The second page is like a quote.
Twenty-six fifty-two?
Um, yeah, twenty-six fifty-two.
I think you got to put a minimum that will accept or...
Well...
Clarify exactly.
You mean equipment, it's not a bid, um...
Repair.
Yes, sorry, thank you, yep, yes. I didn't really see the need to go much further until we decided what we wanted to do here.
So I'd like to make a motion that we sell the vehicle with the minimum bid at seven thousand dollars.
And the option to accept or reject all bids?
That's what she's got us traded.
I know, and that's why, it's not possibly, because if it was worth that, we would make these fixes.
Five? I'm going by your paper here.
Do we have an established number?
Five.
Five?
And the option to accept and reject? Or do you want it if?
No.
No?
I agree with you.
You do it every month?
To accept or reject, you mean that?
Can, if we're just, if we're just accepting bids, we can reject any. There's already issue with saying minimum bid of five hundred and we get everything that comes in. We don't have to accept it.
That would be up to trustee Russo to state that in her motion.
With the option to accept or reject any bids.
And I'm sorry, what was the minimum bid again?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, still five thousand, got it.
Okay.
Um, I do have a motion, was there a support?
Oh, you need a support?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, um, we'll come back.
We need a vote.
Wasn't, there was no support?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, pardon me, go ahead, call the roll.
Gotcha, Russo?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Okay, moving into our, the roof for the police station. They're very needy lately. Um, however, they also have the worst, they have the worst building.
I just tried to get them seven thousand and they told me no.
So, um, yes, we've had a lot of rain, it started leaking of what I was told is again.
So since...
There's been multiple leaks over time, recently, it's, because again, the rain, it started leaking again. Um, called two, two local companies, Paramount was the first to reach out, come look at it, and I, they gave me a short fix of pretty much their low estimate here, and I was like, yeah, I'm not spent, I don't see us putting four thousand dollars taxpayer dollars into something to then turn around and possibly rip off. So I asked them, what is the cheapest Band-Aid you could put on it? So there was a six hundred and fifty dollar, very temporary Band-Aid. I did try to get other quotes, one company did not want to quote it, and I'm still playing phone tag with the other local company who did call me back this afternoon, so it's just a matter of getting us to line up. So if we wanted another quote, there is kind of time, but...
Are we currently leaking as of today? Is there leaks?
With the rain? I was, I was not made aware.
I haven't seen anything today, uh, they did come and do some repairs, so the daylight coming through the ceiling, you know, we don't see that right now.
You didn't want to skylight?
Well, no, because that was the potential of how bad when, when the first contractor was showing me pictures and explaining the life of the roof and what to look for, X, Y, and Z, the life is spent. Um, so it sounded like it needs to be torn off, there's also no insulation, no barrier. Um, so it sounded like the way to go was the need for replacement, so I was, that's where I said, we're not putting out a four thousand dollar Band-Aid if we're just going to turn around and rip that off to fix.
So if we go out for bid, if something arises, Megan, you have, and I think Mark said, actual authority to spend up to a certain dollar amount for repairs?
In an emergency.
In an emergency.
Well, in an emergency, I, we could approve the nine-five.
Yes.
Yeah, so if something arises in the meantime, we can get someone out there in emergency to get a repair.
Right, what we're running into is it is such a small portion, these bigger companies that are ramping up into their busy season, it's not worth their time, but, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
So do you need a motion to go out for bid?
Yeah, get a, if you, I will try my best.
Make a motion to go out for bid for a repair on the roof for the, is that just the police or is that over village hall also?
It's just that, no, it's just the flat part and the police.
Why don't we just fix it?
Go out for bid for a repair.
That's not something I'm well versed in square footage.
How big's the area?
Yeah, wait about twenty by twenty?
No.
It's that whole back end, all the way from the back door of my office, where there's just one floor.
Yeah, yeah, so the bid we got, I mean, Matt, it says, well, almost fifty-four hundred for a five-year fix.
Right.
Where a replacement's ninety-five.
That's what I'm saying, but if we're just going to put a six-month Band-Aid on it, I mean, we're going to be looking at this again in September.
That's what I'm saying, let's go out for bid to get it replaced.
Yeah, let's get a real roof.
Yeah, that's what I'm making a motion.
Right, well, and we do have one quote, but he's suggesting we get...
Yeah, follow our policy, get three.
So what you're saying, let's get the Band-Aid on it till we get the quote.
No, we already have, we already have the six hundred and fifty dollar Band-Aids.
That's already done, okay.
So continue with a motion to go out for bid for replacement of the police station roof. To board.
Megan, did he, I hear the short-term fix is five years, but he didn't say anything about the mortgage.
That's like, I want to say a life of roof for twenty twenty-five, I think it was in the email or...
Okay, that's, thank you.
Flat commercial roofs, no.
And it included the insulation in that, okay. All in favor of going out for RFP for the roof replacement?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed. Okay, it is now nine thirty-seven. Do we want to make a motion right now to continue past ten o'clock?
We're going to have to if we're going to close session anyways, right? So I'll make a motion to go past ten o'clock if needed.
All in favor of extending past ten o'clock? Aye. We should really just change that in our rules of procedure, do we ever say no? Okay, moving into our public comment, again, we have, everyone has three minutes. This is public comment, we're not discussing, um, trustee Russo?
I have set the alarm to go off at two minutes thirty seconds, so when they hear it...
Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Trustee Russo has let me know that she's setting an alarm for two minutes and thirty seconds, so when you first hear it, that's a notice, so you have thirty seconds left, so it's not just literally cutting your sentence off.
I don't want to interrupt.
I'm good, thank you.
Hey, Zach.
Any mark?
I'm up here about, I'm up here about, my name's Richard Corry, I live on Chandler Street. Um, when I first heard that the school board was sending out RFPs for the possibility of building seventeen homes on the property up there where the old middle school was, I knew I had to act. Uh, well, the first thing I did is I got ahold of the village president, you know, just to be transparent of what I was doing, what I was trying to do, and I got ahold of the superintendent, told him what, what I was going to do. And what I did was I went around my neighborhood, Prospect, Chandler, and Church Street and handed out flyers, probably put out about forty flyers, and some of the people are here tonight and I want to thank them for staying this late. Then on April fourth, we met right here in this room, there was about thirty-five of us and we made a subcommittee, and out of that subcommittee, we, we decided we're going to send a letter to the school board, which was sent out this morning. And the basics of that was our concerns, and our concerns were basically this. Uh, we want to know if there was any deed restrictions on the property, and if they did send it out for approval, I also went to the planning commission to tell them that it was probably going to end up on their desk, like it'll probably end up on yours eventually. But we wanted to make sure if they did pick a bid, and we wanted to make sure that developer knew that about section forty-six, one fifty-four of the village building code, which states, "Single-family dwellings shall be aesthetically compatible in design and appearance with other residents in the vicinity." We also found out that they had a consultant who, which we thought was very positive, that went around and talked to residents, but at my meeting of thirty-five residents, I asked for a show of hands if any of the, if the consultant had talked to any of the people that lived right, you know, right on those streets, and that, that didn't happen. So we're going to look at it very positively, I'm going to go to the school board at their next meeting on May first and see if we can't meet with their consultant to let them know what some of our concerns are. And we're going to ask them to pause, just pause a little bit before you, before you take a bid, or the superintendent did tell me that they might not even have to take a bid, they can turn them all down. And we want them to look at other ideas besides homes, like maybe urban farming. We have no idea where education's going to go in the next five, ten years. So we're hoping that maybe they can find, you know, kind of an exciting way to use that property for the kids. So, I know my time's about up, so the grassroots group, we're going to meet, and I really do want to thank those guys for coming. Uh, and the reason I'm here is just to let you guys know what I'm doing, I just want to be as transparent as I can be. And I want to thank the three people that voted to not move comment to the end of the meeting, so thanks for that. That's all I got.
Thanks for coming, Richard.
Richard, I'm going to pass along some secondhand, probably information that, I don't know if it'll stand the test of time, but I had heard from someone that Brian Mitten, who lives on Prospect in the yellow house across the street from the old middle school. He's here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there you are. Could, could you speak to that? Uh, I had heard that you had a letter from the...
We're, we're, we're a group of about thirty-five of us right now.
Okay, but that the property couldn't be used for anything but school property?
Speaking of the deed that was presented?
Well, I tell you, to answer that question, Jason Foltz was here, but because we got moved to the end of the meeting, he, he might not be back in time, he was going to try to come back, but that is on the table, Matt.
Okay, I, I...
Brian?
Right, the original...
The original owners and the original owners are still, the family living is still here.
He found them.
He found them.
He found them in Massachusetts.
Doesn't surprise me.
So this is something the village, yeah, I'm not supposed to, I suppose that my... This is something, this is something the village may need to pursue, because it may ultimately be the village's property or it may be this family's property to donate to the village. Before there's an ad around and the school just pushes this right through.
Right.
It might be something that you would more need to, and need to have your lawyer look at. Or, okay, if your part of the property is sold off to develop.
So you guys have this flutter, though?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you email it to the president? To the board members?
I got, I actually got, he just gave me a thing here, I can give her the whole packet, I'll give you the whole packet, Megan.
Is that, is that something we can have Mark look at?
But I think another reason I'm here, and I know I'm out of time, but this is real quick, is, you know, seventeen homes is a lot of homes. The village will allow seventeen homes, they allow, you guys allow seventeen, huh? Yeah, the ordinance allows seventeen homes, so we know, you know, we're kind of, you know, we got a tough road to climb here, but, you know, we're Romeo and we always seem to come through and...
It'd be nicer if we could keep it as a park or for the kids.
That's, let's just get the discussion going, that's the whole thing, that's the whole thing. That's why, there's, there's another group, a couple other groups, they're going to do Facebook and all that stuff. We don't want to do any of that stuff, we want to come to the decision makers with facts so we can get it done correctly. That's what we're doing, that's what this group is doing, so I'm real proud of these guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, I applaud everything Richard said, he's an old Romeo guy and is looking out for the best interests, but, um, anyway, and I'm much older than he is. Also, about the public comment, I came in two or three minutes late or whatever, I had requested like three months ago or whatever, that the board should look at allowing two public comments. Um, a lot of the municipal meetings and school board meetings and whatever, if they don't have two public comments, there's continual interaction with all of your activity. This is an open meeting, whatever, but that's not what I'm here for. I'm here because of the flyer about the water, and I know that you've already discussed that, um, and had there been a public comment, I would have spoke before, you had the discussion, but then once the discussion starts, we, as people here at the meeting cannot speak, so I had no interaction. So I'm here to request that this board would hold a town hall... So, I'm here to request that this board would hold a town hall meeting regarding the new proposed water rates and sewer rates. The Romeo Board in July of twenty-twenty-two voted to approve the water study unanimously. Not one board member at that time asked any questions, approved it unanimously. And it was shared at that meeting that a household using ten thousand gallons or less would see a three-month billing decrease of thirty to forty dollars. Not so with myself, with this flyer. If I use ten thousand gallons, I could be looking at paying another one hundred dollars. My current water bill, at the fixed rate of one thousand, or ten thousand or less, is a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. Now, if these rates hold true, I will be paying approximately three hundred dollars every three months. So it's twelve hundred dollars a year. And then, we have, in my condo complex, there's eighty-eight units, probably majority of the people, I'd say ninety-five percent, all have softeners in their basement. They're either rented, or they're bought, and they're putting in five to seven dollars a bag of salt. So if you would please understand that there's something missing in the new billing rate, you couldn't have knowingly turned your back on we, the people, without further discussion. People lead busy lives, and perhaps didn't, didn't pay any attention to this flyer, but rest assured, when their July bill comes, you will have their attention. So please call for a town hall meeting, so that we are aware of our options, hopefully, it can be resolved by the slogan, "Promises made, promises kept." Thank you. Mary Meisner, four-eight-nine Victoria, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen, the council. My name is Julie Day from two-oh-nine North Main Street. And this certainly has been a whirlwind change of seasons for everyone. It is very difficult for me to be here, as many here are associates and customers, and unfortunately, unfortunately, we are on different sides of the Elizabeth factor in our community. This, this whole thing, these past several weeks, are just a reminder of why we never truly got involved with this, the goings-on in the village. I did not speak at the DDA meeting concerning Elizabeth Miller's employment, it was obvious I did not need to. There were many more supporters than seventy or eighty-so residents and business owners. Perhaps the problems that are going on, they have started in November over an unlocked office and playing chicken with a set of keys. If you would like to see the laundry list of refusals to attend meetings, and refusals to attend special events in which some were voted to represent our village, I have a laundry list of mishaps caused by your village president. These are from last fall through February, arguing over copy paper, computer modems, filing cabinets, and maybe causing this good village to break a lease. Was this the intent to cause harm to the executive director, a terrible environment and lock them out so they can't function? A vicious plot that went awry, or so it seems. You have all seen Elizabeth rebound from this questionable action. The new committee that was formed to oust Ms. Miller, the so-called committee, they were the only people with derogatory reviews in her employee file, the ones that I had called for to be replaced and/or removed. One of these letters clearly state that this person is not optimistic that they can work with Ms. Miller. Another stated that Elizabeth doesn't listen to the community and businesses, and that all businesses should be treated and promoted equally. For the first time in over thirty years, the past seventeen or eighteen months, this has been done. The horrible gossip needs to stop, people running up and down Main Street, sitting in local establishments, practically slandering each other, this has got to stop. I certainly don't want to be represented by this new board, running around saying they're from Romeo. I have admissions, I have letters, and I think, Mr. Parker, you hit it right on the nose, revamp the entire situation and start over. If the board is able to make that decision, it may be good for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Marty Hutnick, two-three-one East St. Clair Street. At the January DDA meeting, I had said multiple times, yes, I am not against the food trucks. I suggested to our DDA director to group them together at the park, at the Lions Club, or even at the parking lot next to my restaurant. That should tell you right there that I am not against these food trucks. Why would I say, "Put them in my parking lot"? All I was saying is, please don't line them up and down Main Street in front of other local businesses. Also, there are always two sides to every story, please reach out and hear both sides. I was a spokesperson for twelve out of the fifteen local restaurants, and because of that, sorry, I have been threatened, cursed at, notes on my business door, and other local businesses advertising for food trucks across the street, beer cans thrown in my parking lot and at my business. It has become so horrible that my family has asked me to step down. Sorry. After a lot of thoughts, I decided I cannot allow others to intimidate me enough to quit. I took an oath, and I'm going to honor that oath. I sent a message to our DDA director, and I'm gonna read it to you, on April fifth. And I said to her, "What happened at the meeting was interesting, to say the least, but I feel that was necessary for our board to communicate our feelings. Granted, we could've done a better job communicating such information in a more professional manner. I hope that we can move forward and work together to complete an agenda that supports Romeo's downtown district. Per the master plan, part of the purpose is to promote economic growth and development in the downtown district. With your creativity, energy, and passion, paired with our board's determination and knowledge, I believe we can accomplish and do great things together. I look forward to everyone exchanging ideas, solutions, and supporting one another as we continue to do great things for our community." And this is how she responded. "I would prefer all communication to be through another board member, which I will not mention, and only done in person." I'm very confused. So I guess I'm to the point is, you know what, if you wanna line the streets, Main Street, with the food trucks, go for it. I'm done with the food truck issue, it's become a joke, and I've become the joke because of it. So, go for it, I'm gonna take those lemons, and I'm gonna make the best lemonade everyone's ever drank.
Good job, Mike.
Hello, my name is Matthew Kaufman, I'm a resident from Lexington Circle. I had some concerns in regards to the new rate structure for the water bill coming up. In short, I would like to see the village hold off on putting the new system in place for a period of time until a more accurate structure can be figured out. One that places revenue shortages on the new township that the village is outsourcing to, as well as the industrial sector. And one that includes a maintenance plan for our fixed, I know you were saying that there was a master asset plan, but one that actually goes after with this new fixed money we'll be receiving. So, as it stands right now, I have a one-inch meter, and I'm gonna be receiving about a twenty-two percent cost increase 'cause of this. And individuals with three-quarter are looking at about an eighteen percent increase if they have a broken meter. So, before I go into the, some of the things that I found to be concerning, I did research a couple other municipalities that were going to this Ready to Serve. Rochester has it, Oxford does as well. The variance between their three-quarter and one-inch lines are within three dollars, not triple the cost of, you know, fifty to one-hundred-and-twenty-five. So, the, just a few things I found reviewing this trend analysis that you had given me the other day is, the study discusses the largest expenditure for the water facility as wholesale water purchase, and it includes Ford still being in there. That's no longer an issue anymore, so the maintenance that Ford was putting on there, that this whole rate plan goes after, is no longer there. One of some other things, on top of that, it talks about inflation that's gonna go up, so it also references there's gonna be a five percent increase of this wholesale water, that's no longer there. It's not included, or it is included, but, so. The study actually does call out saying the model needs to be updated annually, as the largest customer does leave, and as well as we begin to take on Bruce Township customers. And, the other concern I had was, we are, have one sewer rate for out-of-t township as well as industrial, but water rates are different for all three of those. So we pay less water, but why is the sewer rate the same for a resident in the village who pays into the general fund versus somebody outside in the township? And that's about it, I'm kinda out of time here, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Franco Fellino, I live at two-fifty-three Chandler Street. We're coming up on about one year of residence in Romeo. First, I'd like to thank Richard for the effort on what's supposed to happen with the Prospect Street Lot. I'm a member of the subcommittee, and obviously, living right across from the property, we're also very concerned about seventeen homes going in, or proposed seventeen homes, and just wanna make sure that Romeo gets set on the right trajectory for the future. So, I just had a quick question on the road repairs. Did I hear that there was a decision made to delay the repair of the roads near the vacant lot on Prospect Street? So in other words, the roads on the perimeter of the lot will be delayed in their repair, is that the proposal? When was that decided? As someone who voted for the village, and I want to see the roads repaired, I don't know why there would be any preconceived notion to repair the roads around the lot when there's been no decision at this point as to the future of that property. So, what was the thought put into that?
I don't even have the information that you're talking about, so that is where we've been going with the information we have. So that's how that was built.
Okay. I would just hope that the, the roads surrounding the empty lot are not put on the same priority scale as other roads in the state of disrepair in the community, and they follow the same schedule of repair, regardless of what the future plans might be for that, for that lot. On the water ordinance, I support, I fully support the earlier comments that were made regarding the proposed water ordinance issue. In short, village residents don't know why water costs are increasing. I, myself, will experience a roughly twenty-two percent cost increase in my bill, which equates to more than five hundred dollars a year, just for my four-person household. I don't know the reason driving this increase. Village residents need to be better informed on the issue. Is a detailed plan ready to execute and properly allocate the extra funds that will be collected? There is? Or there's not? No? Okay. There's, so there's no plan, I'm not sure why we'd be asking for more money if there's no plan, what the, what the plans are to do with that money. It seems to me, in short, that more information is required before proper decisions can be made on the water ordinance issue. I fully support having a town hall meeting on the matter, where the entire community can be informed of when it will be discussed, and we can attend. I apologize for not attending the meeting you had last week, right? To talk about the flyer, I was at work all day and I couldn't make it. My coworker attended, but obviously, there are still concerns, so full support of a town hall meeting for the water issue, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, there is a capital improvement plan that was done, it is old, it should be redone. And we did have a town hall, and there was a whole presentation, again, that was a while ago.
So, did that town hall incorporate the Ford plant leaving?
At the time that we had it, I can't recall if we were told that, that if Ford was even leaving at the time that we had it, do you remember?
I wasn't on the board, but I remember being there.
I know. By the time Ford, I don't know if that plan, I can't recall, 'cause it was twenty, it was just before twenty, so I can't recall if we were even notified yet that Ford was leaving. I can't remember the timelines. 'Cause I believe we spoke about it before that.
The rate study, right, at that time?
Yeah, we had already, we had already done it, the board had already done it, and there was already a presentation.
But the study, the capital plan is on the website?
I don't know if it's on the website.
Where could someone find it, to just get an idea of what's happening? And on top of that, too, we also need to figure, a major industrial partner has left the community, so how is that affecting us as residents? And why is someone like myself experiencing a five-hundred-dollar-a-year increase for just water? So, I know I'm over my time, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Geddert, I'm a resident of Bruce Township and the coordinator for the SERVE and NHS programs at Romeo High School. Through both of these organizations, I've been working closely with the DDA over the last year and a half to help provide volunteers for the various downtown events. I strongly feel that the DDA staff is vital to not only supporting our businesses, but also to helping make connections and creating a vibrant community. The recent strife between the village board and the DDA staff causes discomfort, which is probably a little bit of an understatement. And if this continues, it's going to just detract from the mission of both. People won't want to volunteer their time or spend their time in the downtown area if they feel that their leaders cannot put their differences aside for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. My name is Betty Cassidy, I live at three-fifty-six Benjamin. I have been away from the village for a little while, even though I've been living there since two thousand and nine, I've been working in Rochester. This last election that we had in the fall made me want to come back and be more involved. I went to a DDA budget meeting last week, and what I saw was not a very good professional board member thing. I saw, every time that the employee of the DDA would talk, there was eye rolls, and they stopped listening and started going through their papers, every single time. We had one lady who did not like the fact, wanted to be able to change all of the events that we had, this is my understanding. It was garbled, there was things everywhere, people were talking everywhere, that they wanted to get rid of all the events that we had, did not care one bit about the volunteers. And everything that, that has been done, and I have been in this, I was involved early, when I first moved in with my children, in the community, and the fact that so much has been done in the last two years is amazing. And I really applaud Elizabeth and her staff, and everyone who has helped her. But the current donations, they, they can't be given back, you can't just say, "Hey, this is what I wanna do, and I'm gonna rule." It, it was, it was a travesty, honestly, and I, It, it was, it was a travesty, honestly, and I, if it continues, I would see it dissolved. I don't want it dissolved, I think the DDA has done an awesome job. I remember when I first started going to the meetings, back in two thousand nine. Now, there is so much better doing, and it just, some of the people need to be removed. It needs to be looked at, and that is my opinion. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Greg Tarr, one sixty-seven South Main. I'm a Washington Township resident, but own a handful of pieces of property in the DDA. First, thank you, Richard, for your great comments, great idea. Been thinking the same thing, for sure, I, I love it. Wanted to point out what's not seen on cameras. Tonight, we've had three uniformed officers here all night, two out in the hallway, which I appreciate them, it's great. Of course, our chief is with us as well. Thought it was a little weird that they were here, and suppose there was supposed to be some sort of ruckus. I've been at this a long time, I knew folks over there who are new to the village and get used to it. Own property here three decades and lived here all my life. And we're on a good trajectory here of things going on with the DDA. I've been on the board for about eighteen months, or, I'm sorry, a little bit longer. Like, we, we hired our director about that time ago, roughly. And I've been maybe two years on the board. I, I think it speaks for itself, the good things we've gotten done. I watched tonight, and I don't know who the people were, what the jobs they were appointed for, but I saw how quickly it went and how laissez-faire it was, and how nobody really knew who was being appointed for whatever position. I'm starting to wonder if that might be some of the problems we're having now. I was one of the three that was sat on the, was asked to sit on the employee committee. The other two individuals that did that work, one had never attended a DDA meeting before, and the other one had attended two meetings. And those two, along with myself, who hired Elizabeth, were charged with evaluating her. Presented with about a forty-page questionnaire, or forty-question questionnaire about her performance. I asked if this was baked around her job description. It wasn't. I was told they didn't have a copy of the job description. I have a thread of text afterwards, the next day after the meeting, circling back with Kelly Stevens and some others who could maybe provide me, the secretary, the job description when we hired her, so I could compare it to the evaluation that she was being given. Wasn't close. I told him I refused to fill out the evaluation, it wasn't fair, it was like comparing a quarterback to a linebacker, both football players, but different jobs. You all know what happened after that spun out of control, you can go watch the meeting if you want. We have a fantastic thing going on here in Romeo. Elizabeth's working hard. I, I, I don't know exactly why there's been a few members that want to change everything. Nobody else has said this other than those two, so. I'll keep it to that point. I, I could share a lot more, and I'd be willing to, I think most people know how to find me. I, I'd be willing to share anything about it that I can publicly, which I think is most of it. With that, I know I'll be buzzed, so, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Greg.
We have ten seconds.
That's all right.
I will take the last ten seconds.
No, I, I, I want to say in all seriousness, I worked very hard at the last DDA meeting to move it along for the respect of the people who come out and do this. I think it was very cheap, what you guys did tonight, doing this. Put all these people through this for no reason. And there's, there's just no reason for this, and you talk about bringing unity. That's not unity. That's just meanness. So, that's my last ten seconds, and thank you for reminding me.
Can I just ask, Mr. Parker, why did you decide to move public comment to the end?
It was my thought that we could get our business done. And like, I think most of us growing up, when in school, you know, the teacher would say, hey, maybe try to hold your comments or your questions to the end, maybe it'll be covered. There was a lot of feedback I received prior, because my name was put on the topic of why are you doing this? And what no one knew, it was for discussion only. And I wanted that known, so we could have a discussion without having the uproar that happened at the DDA meeting. Because we're here to do business, we're not here to scream and yell at each other. And I thank everyone tonight for not letting it go how it was at the DDA meeting. This was very professional, everyone was very calm, and we got business done. Everyone still has a great chance to speak their mind, and we can move forward.
Would you, I mean, for next meeting, I think most of the people in this room would rather have it before. And I think, you know, you want to do what the people want, right? Yes?
Is that a question?
Yeah, that's a question, yeah.
I, I think, if we can maintain, I, I think this is, this is, this is a great, a great meeting.
Thank you. I just did have one other comment for this board to consider. Appointing board members to all the different groups, it's very convoluted. And, and like, I think Greg or someone said that, you know, there's real no criteria or policies or anything in place. So, you know, every, every four years, it seems like the president, I know it's historic, you know, voted their friends in or nominated their friends, it's just always going to be like that. In four years, if Meghan doesn't decide to run or whatever, and there's someone new, the same thing is going to happen. So, in my professional opinion, as a twenty-year CEO of a nonprofit agency, you have a nominating committee. And I think in the best interest of this community, having a nominating committee with criteria in place would help this community tremendously. I mean, I know there's a lot of people that have been appointed are friends of, you know, I, I won't go into that, but, you know, we all know who's friends of whose. But I think moving forward, you should really consider that. I think that's one way of bringing this community together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Hi, Andrea St. Lawrence, one seventy Pleasant Street. My letter was already read today, so I'm just going to keep this really short, just to kind of reference a few things. I joined this board, and it was the first time that I met Meghan, was the first conversation that I had with her when I sent her the letter. I sent her probably about a two-page letter explaining my history, my background, what I did when I served on the board before, and that letter was shared with the village council. So, this is not a friendship, this is me reaching out to someone and saying I was interested to be on the board. So, well, I just want to reference, because the comment that people are putting friends on the board, well, I'm not one of those people. So, I just want to make that clear.
Could you direct your comments to the board, please?
Yes, so I just want to make it clear, because there's a lot of things that I've had to say to the DDA in the last couple of weeks of honesty matters, and telling the truth matters, and giving a full story matters. So, when we have things like rumors out there that someone's getting fired, and the uproar that we saw at the DDA meeting, when that wasn't even the recommendation. And what came out of that was a complete stain on our town, because people didn't want to listen, and people wanted to make assumptions, and people wanted to cast shadows. So, I just leave it with honesty matters, and before jumping to conclusions, be open to what people are actually saying and doing, and I think we would get a lot further as a community. Thank you.
Say, is there any more?
Lisa Hall, current Planning Commission's EVA member, one nineteen South Harriet. I just wanted to, capital improvements plan that you said we do have? When, do you know when it was done, and does it need to be updated?
Oh, it needs to be updated, nineteen is when it, because it had to do with our SAW grant.
Okay. So, is that something that you want the Planning Commission to?
It would be, yeah. I, when, in talking to John Kesar this afternoon with the current rates and the current concerns, yeah.
Okay, so that's something, because there was a, there was a flyer in our last packet, but it did not get discussed, and if we don't have one?
Oh, that, I apologize. For the asset management?
Yeah.
That was to, and I meant to get that to all of the boards, in going into asset managing, trying to get us all on the same page, there's a class out there that everyone can take. It's free, if you can't make that time, that it's offered. It's recorded, and you watch it when you can. It's just trying to get us all on the same page, that was the intent there.
And in regards to the Church Street property, are we going to do a workshop, or are we actually going to do a meeting?
However, the Planning Commission needs to figure that out.
Okay, so you just get ahold of Cindy and, and Karen?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I have one thing to say about all the other things. Romeo's a great town. We're more divided than we've ever been. A house divided will fall, a town divided will fall. We all need to figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Miller, I live on Chandler Street. As most of you know, I'm the executive director, currently the executive director of the Romeo DDA. On January twenty-third, four new board members were appointed instead of two that was posted and reported to the public. This was due to the correction of term limits, yet it was rushed through and not given the public notice of now four appointments instead of two. We had consistent and professional communication and work ethic with the former board. Overnight, my employment became complete and utter chaos, but not just for me. Overnight, it also included chaos for my staff, which is only one person. Over thirty volunteers, downtown businesses, sponsors, and vendors. In less than twelve hours, three were sworn in, a special meeting was called an hour later. That afternoon, the paper was not provided to me, as I normally was able to use paper. A special meeting the next day, changing events, on and on and on. Yesterday, on Sunday night, I sent quite a lengthy letter to this full board. If you have not opened it or read it, I encourage you to please do so. I'm actually pleading with you to please read this letter in its entirety. If there is not a complete overhaul of the DDA board, the current board majority will figure out another way to eliminate me by force or through budgetary reductions. There's a special me, there's a budget workshop tomorrow morning, seven fifteen AM at the DDA offices. Madison Roush, my incredibly dedicated admin and event coordinator, has publicly stated that she will also resign. I have been told over twenty talented volunteers, if you're a volunteer, would you please raise your hand? Quite a few in here. Are becoming so discouraged and frustrated that they will probably look elsewhere to help, which is a huge travesty. Sponsors have publicly stated that they will pull their funding and in-kind donation, one has already done so. What has been built in eighteen short months will be destroyed. I didn't create this in eighteen months, we did. I may be the vision, I might have the crazy ideas, but everybody else made these things happen. And for what, to control a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget of the DDA? To make the professional and professional and personal life of the executive director extremely difficult? I can assure you, the thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred-dollar salary with no benefits is not why I stay. No one wins here. The actions of these appointments, the village president and one more are tarnishing our reputation. Businesses are being negatively affected, and some are so discouraged they're considering closing their doors. One is here tonight. If you'd like to know who they are, I'll let you, I'll, I'll give that to you. You can make this right, you can turn this ship around before it gets torpedoed again. Eleven individuals, some residents, some businesses, CBD property owners, developers submitted their interest to filling the seat. I understand you were not provided a list of that, I don't have time to read the eleven names that I have. You have the authority, per the DDA ordinance, to end the harassment, persecution, retaliation, and hostile work environment caused by the elected official, Meghan Poznanski, and board members. Board appointments, you village council have the responsibility to stop this madness from continuing. As your neighbor, as your employee, as a human being, please stop this from happening further. Thank you.
Public comment is about to close, do we have any more public comments? Hearing done, we close public comment time. We are moving into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
All in fix.
Roll call. Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.